Welcome, everybody, to the June 7th Planning Commission meeting. Start off with a salute to the flag. Mr. Johnson, would you lead us, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rikuchi?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here.
Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Setterson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Report from the planning thereafter.
Paul Thompson with Planning Services. Upcoming board meetings. So, we received an appeal on the variance for Lucky's Travel Plaza. So, that will be going to the board here shortly. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings, June 14th. That meeting is canceled. June 28th, we'll have the headquarters RV park rezoning, meaning planned amendment, use permit. That's a small RV park. That's on the Digness McGee's property out east of I-80 in Bell Road area. The Orchard at Pinrin, 150-unit apartment complex in the Pinrin area. The Homewood Villas at Harborside, that's a six-unit times-year conversion to single-family dwellings. That's in the Homewood area along the lake. And then, the Sugar Bowl Academy project, which is a ski academy up in the Sugar Bowl area for grades six through 12. Other announcements, Tony LaBeuf has announced his retirement, and this is his last week. And as far as, no new word on the CEO yet, but I think that's pretty close. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment if anybody would like to address the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. Now would be the time to do so. None? We're early.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. I am E.J. Baldi, and I'm here to present to you the Amazing Facts Ministry Project, the only item on the agenda. We have a pretty lengthy presentation. We're going to break it up a little bit, but hopefully we'll get you overview of the project and what to expect. So, with that, I'll jump into it. And let me go back real quick. So, the proposal before you today, Amazing Facts Ministry Project is proposing to construct a 17-acre campus to support a new house of worship facility in the Granite Bay area. County staff has been working with the applicant team on this project since early 2008, and they are represented here today by Rod Shear with Shear &amp; Associates and Dave Cook with the RCH Group. Also here today, I believe, is Pat Angel with PMC, the EIR consultant, and of course, all of our county staff, who has diligently been working on this project over the last several years. So, I'll tell you just briefly about who Amazing Facts are. Amazing Facts Ministries is organized under the Northern California Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. They are a multifaceted international Christian media ministry, which includes television and radio broadcasting, internet, and the Amazing Facts School of Evangelism. Amazing Facts formed a congregation in the Granite Bay community in September of 2007. They currently meet on Saturdays at the Shepherd of the Sierra Church. That church is located at Barton and Rockland Roads, and I believe they have about 300 families as part of that congregation. So, this house of worship is proposed to be constructed on a 74-acre site located on the south side of Sierra College Boulevard between Night Watch Drive and Ridge Park Drive, most easily seen, I guess, as you're driving, if you're driving from Rockland over on top of Sierra College into Roseville. It's right on the top, on the left-hand side. This land use map kind of shows it a little better. The city of Rockland is located all along the northern, north side of Sierra College Boulevard. The town of Loomis is in the orange there, just kind of northeast of the project site. Everything to the south is Sierra College. From this line down, is all unincorporated Placer County and all within the Granite Bay Community Plan. The land use designation for the site is rural estate, which has a 4.6 acre to 20-acre minimum, and it is zoned FBX 20-acre minimum, which is a farm zone. The proposed house of worship would be an allowed use in the farm zone district with approval of a minor use permit. Here's an aerial view, and just kind of talking about, it's a little dark, but up in this corner is the San Juan Water Reservoir. To the east of the project is the Andrews property, where there's a wholesale nursery down south along in this area, along Cabot-Salmon Road and in the general area, mainly comprised of 4.6-acre minimum and larger rural residential parcels. And then, of course, up on top, close to Sierra College Boulevard, this is the Cabot Ranch Estates. That was approved several years back. You know, a lot of large parcels, 4.6 acres in size, I believe, and, you know, there's some fairly large residences up there. The little slides to the right just kind of shows you a picture of the property looking towards the northwest and then to the east more of what is typical of the site. Then, another aerial view, just kind of a blow-up. The project site is right here. Development of the site is going to be pretty much limited to this little 17-acre portion in this area. Actually, property goes way down here and includes a pond area or a spillway. And then, you've got the office park that's in the city of Rockland, and then you have some kind of medium-density, low to medium-density residential uses in this area. Better picture of Cabot Ranch Estates and some of the homes that are built there. There's actually two lots, right? One here and one in this area that will eventually put homes on them. This is the proposed site plan. There's going to be a total of three buildings constructed, one, two, three, for a total of 208,000 square feet. Access to the site would be provided at the signalized intersection of Sierra College Boulevard and Night Watch Drive. That's right up here. Secondary access with right turn in and right turn out only would be constructed along Sierra College Boulevard approximately 450 east of the primary access down here. And also on the site plan, you can see the San Juan Water Reservoir up here, and then a drainage that comes down into the spillway. There'll also be some minor development down here, just to improve, install a weir and improve the outfall of this drainage area. No other development is proposed in this area, and that would remain like you see it today. So, this is a phased project. Phase one would include a multi-use building just under 108,000 square feet. It would include an auditorium gymnasium with seating for 1,300 people for Saturday-only worship services, which they may have up to two. There would be Sabbath classrooms used for Saturday morning classes, as well as the Evangelism Ministry Training Center that would host 40 to 50 adult students four months, twice a year. The building would also include a fireside chapel, ministry offices, and a green room for guest speakers. There's also an adjoining kitchen to support community events, banquets, and church meals. Phase one would also include an 11,200-square-foot Resource Center building as support to the ministry for housing and distributing materials such as CDs, DVDs, tapes, and periodicals. Then also, as part of phase one, they would be constructing 625 parking spaces, which is beyond what's allowed or required by our parking ordinance. Excuse me. So, these are the building elevations for phase one. The architects for this project spent a considerable amount of time on the building designs in an effort to bring down the mass of these large structures. Architectural features include wall articulation with insetts and wing walls, a lot of roof overhangs and columns, and then there's a kind of multi-plane roofing, as you can see, with varying roofites. Building materials are going to be stone, masonry, stucco, metal and concrete panels. There'll be some aluminum shades, all with, in earthstone colors to blend in with the natural environment. In order to minimize the visual impact of the buildings, the building pads would be lowered, and the building would step down the site to the south, which you can see in the east elevation, how it comes down there. There's actually a portion of the building that's three stories, but up on top, the visual appearance is, it is two stories, and the visual appearance also is as well. Building heights, maximum height, which is proposed and permitted under the ordinance, is 57 and 1/2 feet, and all the structures meet that requirement. This is just another elevation showing the west and south elevations. South elevation is what you would see from the south down below the project site, which is the mass of the building, but you would not see that from Sierra College Boulevard. So, as part of phase two, they would be constructing a permanent worship facility, about 90,000 square feet with seating for 2,000 people. This would replace the multi-use buildings function as the primary worship facility. There would be 25 Sabbath classrooms in this building, a central lobby area, and a small chapel. And in addition, another 275 parking spaces would be constructed, making a total of 900. And these are the elevations of that building. We have the east and north elevations, same architecture, matching the other building, and then also the west and south. So, this slide shows a phasing plan, shows as part of phase one, oh, let me go back. So, as part of phase one, the multi-use building will be constructed first, along with the Resource Center building and the 625 parking spaces in this area. Phase two, which there's no time on when that would be developed at this point, but that would include the main sanctuary, and then the additional parking areas where there were 275 more spaces. And prior to that phase, this would all be planted or hydroceded and maintained until future development. This plan also shows the setbacks and how far these buildings will be set back from Sierra College Boulevard. Obviously, the first-phase building will be set back quite a bit, much more than the future worship building, which is going to be set back 295 feet from Sierra College Boulevard. The phase-one building is 245 feet from the closest property line to the Cabot Ranch Estates residence, and then the closest building would be the Resource Center, which is about 125 feet back. So, all of them have been situated as far back and set down on the property to make them as less visible as possible. And then, the landscaping plan shows extensive landscaping along the Sierra College Boulevard frontage. In some areas, there's as little as 10 feet of landscaping, but the reason for that is there, this embankment gets steeper and steeper as you go down, so the site's not that visible when you're down that low. And then, as you come out this way, there's as much as 95 or 90 feet deep of landscaping within this area. So, the area where it's most visible is most heavily landscaped. Landscaping would meet the county's design guidelines. That includes all the landscaping within the parking area. And then, towards the back of the property, there's going to be a series of retaining walls, since this is all stepped down, to support this lower parking area. And then, this will all be revegetated with natural grasses and natural trees. One last thing I want to point out is along this west property line, along the Cabot Ranch Estates properties, they are going to be constructing a sound wall that came out of the environmental impact report and as a mitigation measure to mitigate for traffic noise impacts of vehicles entering and exiting the site. At the project's entrance, there's going to be a monument sign. This just kind of shows you what that's going to be, what it's going to look like, just a low-profile monument sign identifying the name of the house of worship. So, throughout this process, there's been a number of meetings, both at the Granite Bay MAC and the applicant and team on their own have met with several neighborhood and community groups over the last several years. Also, there's been a lot of discussions with the city of Rockland and town of Loomis regarding primarily traffic circulation issues. So, as a result of those meetings, the applicant team did go back, and they did make a few modifications, which I will go through. They made a modification to the proposed broadcast antenna. Originally, it was a proposed to be a 75-foot tower that was located high in the Resource Building. There's a lot of concern about that, so now they have moved it and placed it on top of the roof of the building. It will not exceed the height that's always, that is already proposed, so much better solution. There's also a modification to the elevations of the Resource Building, which was proposed as a metal building, so they're going to spruce that up, and I'll get to a slide in a minute. And lastly, the applicant has proposed to re-stripe Sierra College Boulevard to address traffic and circulation concerns by neighbors, and also to offer some sort of a regional benefit to the neighboring jurisdictions. So, this is an elevation of the building where the antenna is going to be located, and as you can see, it's kind of barely a blip on top of the building now, much more non-obtrusive than the 75-foot tower, so it should blend in with the building fairly well. And then, the Resource Building that has been, the exterior has been upgraded, which was originally just metal walls, which is shown down here in these elevations. The metal siding has been replaced with stucco walls and eased to create shadow lines, along with additional landscaping, since this building is situated closest to Sierra College Boulevard compared to the other ones. So, regarding the Sierra College restriping, the applicant has listed concerns from residents in the Ridge Park subdivision. Again, they've also engaged the city of Rockland and town of Loomis with a proposal to re-stripe Sierra College Boulevard from Night Watch Drive to north of Eldon Avenue to provide for two northbound through lanes. If you're familiar with that area now, there's three lanes going in one direction and one going northbound. The restriping would probably improve circulation in the area. The intersection at Ridge Park Drive would experience a reduction in the length of delay in accessing Sierra College Boulevard. Adding a second northbound lane would also provide space for deceleration by motorists turning right onto Ridge Park Drive, as well as room for acceleration by motorists turning right onto Sierra College Boulevard. So, it kind of just fixes the circulation in that general area or improves it. This is a proposal by the applicant. This is not a requirement by the county, not a mitigation measure out of the EIR. The county is in support of it, but the applicant would have to work directly with the city of Rockland regarding any necessary approvals and permits regarding that. So, we did prepare an environmental impact report on this project. That is probably what took the bulk of the time over the last several years. The draft EIR identified 11 resource areas where project impacts would have a significant or potentially significant impact. However, with the proposed mitigation measures in the EIR, those impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels, and those are listed up there on the screen. The draft EIR also concluded that after implementation of all mitigation measures, there were three areas with identified impacts that would remain significant and unavoidable. And that was in the area of visual resources regarding the effect on scenic vista, traffic and circulation, primarily impacts to three intersections along Sierra College Boulevard and at the project's entrance, and then also cumulative air quality impacts. And I'll just kind of briefly touch on some of the areas within the EIR. As far as the visual analysis, when I'm done here, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Cook, the applicant, to give, he gave a really good overview of the visual impact of this project at the Grand Bay MAC, and I'm going to have him do the same here today, because I think it's going to be beneficial, so you guys have a good understanding of what to see. As for traffic, traffic associated with phase one was determined to have a negligible effect on existing levels of service during the Saturday peak hour at intersections along Sierra College Boulevard within the study area. Phase two, however, though, would trigger the need for improvements to allow for a second northbound through lane at the intersection of Night Watch Drive and along the project's frontage. Additionally, the Sierra College Boulevard-Rockland Road intersection is not projected to meet the city of Rockland's level of service standards with the development of phase two. Improvements within the Sierra College right-of-way fall under the jurisdiction of the city of Rockland. The county cannot guarantee these improvements or that these improvements would be constructed in the future. Because of that, these impacts remain significant and unavoidable. In regards to the air quality, even with mitigation, the project's incremental contribution to regional criteria of pollutant emissions is considered a cumulatively considerable and significant and unavoidable impact. Just, I want to talk about cultural resources real quick. County staff, the applicant, and the United Auburn Indian community met on a number of times and worked together to revise mitigation measure 7-2 to further protect a known cultural resource site from the proposed development activity. This is on the southern half of the site. The mitigation measure now includes onsite monitoring by the tribe and also that the applicant put in place a permanent conservation easement to protect this area. There's a lot of concern there. We had a lot of discussions, and we think the mitigation measure is strong enough to protect the tribe's interest as well as the county and what's actually onsite. As far as biological resources onsite, the top of the site is primarily comprised of annual grasslands. There'll be about 9.3 acres of annual grasslands that will be impacted. There's no mitigation requirement for that. As far as oak trees, there's going to be a total of 6.35 acres of oak woodland impacted, and they will be required to mitigate that on a two-to-one basis. That will probably be off-site. And then, also, there's five significant trees that will be, need to be mitigated for on an inch-for-inch basis. There are vernal pools, as you can see, up on top of the level area of the site. All of those vernal pools will be removed as part of this development, and there's about .22 acres, and they'll have to work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the appropriate mitigation. There's also some wetland impacts, .55 acres, and those will be mitigated for as well. Additionally, various special status plants, animals, bats, and birds will be surveyed and appropriate steps taken to avoid impacts to them. So, community plan consistency, that was always a discussion at meetings with this project. There are a lot of policies in the community plan regarding the intensity of use. There's policies specific to commercial-type land uses and also public and private institutions. As far as intensity of use, the policies call out that areas along the fringe of neighboring jurisdictions need to provide for a transition between the urban densities in those jurisdictions and the low-intensity uses within the unincorporated Placer County. And this site, located where it is, is adjacent to higher-intensity uses. They have the office park across the street. The fact that most of the church will be constructed on that 17-acre portion and not down below on the remainder of the 74-acre site will prevent any other intense development from happening down there. So, I think that, I think they meet the intent of that. The policies for commercial land uses indicates that buildings should be of moderate size and scale compatible with the pedestrian scale and the rural character of the community. That's the reason the buildings have been placed back as far as they are on the site, the excessive setbacks. They lowered the grade, the actual parking grade, and building pad elevations would be lowered to bring down the scale of the buildings, and then the extensive landscaping. And when Mr. Cook provides his presentation on the visual analysis, there'll be a little more discussion about that. Then, as far as public and private institutions, the policies in the plan basically would like to limit institutional uses to those which provide non-commercial services or facilities for local residents and contribute to the general well-being of the community. This church will provide for the local residents. They do have an existing congregation in Granite Bay right now, not as large as this church would accommodate, but I think they meet that intent, and they also, you know, provide a benefit with their other activities at the church also for the local community. But I would also say that, you know, this, you know, the congregation will not be limited to Granite Bay only, similar to Bayside. I'm sure it will draw people from other areas of the, in the area. So, right now, I'm going to, I might turn it over to Dave Cook and have him go through the visual analysis, and when he gets done, I'll come back and close, and I'll update you on the MAC meeting and what their recommendation was and what we're asking of you today.
Thank you. Thank you, E.J. Dave Cook with RCH Group, Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. As E.J. indicated, let's go the right direction here, the visual impacts were among those that were significant and unavoidable. And when I first got involved, although this project came to the MAC in 2005, 2008, 2009, and they made significant changes to their site planning and to their buildings and the massing, when I got involved in 2010, one of the concerns that I had was, even with the mitigation here of earth tones and that sort of thing, had we done enough? Had we carefully analyzed what the potential visual impact of these buildings might be on the rest of the Granite Bay community? Because they'd been moved off the road so as not to impact the views right on Sierra College, might they be therefore more visible to properties to the south and to the east? And so, although this does remain significant and unavoidable according to the EIR, what we underwent was a process of trying to carefully evaluate what those impacts may be. As E.J. just went through, we also looked at the community plan goals and policies and tried to consider whether or not these buildings would be of a scale and size conducive to maintaining the rural residential atmosphere. Now, anybody who's driven up Sierra College, and you'll see as I go through this, understand that this rural residential atmosphere here is a little different than some of the original areas of Granite Bay, and size and scale is sort of a relative description, given the magnitude of the homes that have been built in Cabot Ranch Estates. So, starting with this, we set out to do a visual simulation, and you can see, it's not easy to see, but it- not easy to see, but in these trees here off of Sierra College, this is Night Watch right here, you can see balloons tied to these trees. Our first effort was a failure. The balloons were too small. It was a windy day, couldn't see them from anywhere, and so we had to go back and give it another try. What we did was we plotted the buildings, and on each of the corners of the three buildings, as well as the top of the retaining wall and the original antenna location, we placed balloons. They're color-coded, and the bottom of the balloon was set at what the finished grade would be for the top of that architectural feature, that architectural element of each of the buildings. This is the key for the numbers for each of those corners, so we had that tied out. This is on Phase One on the Resource Center, and we also did it on Phase Two. It's a cross-section of how this looks, and so we were looking at the top of this slope, knowing that some trees would be cleared here for that fill slope when we went in to do the grading, to lower the site, reduce the magnitude and the visual impact of these buildings by taking advantage of the slope. So what I'm going to show you are photo locations A through D, and we basically sort of did a loop around the area to search out where might this building or these buildings be visible to the Granite Bay community, and we were somewhat surprised. So the first one here with A, and the way you do these simulations is you take a photo at eye level and you use 50-millimeter setting on the lens, so it's what the human eye would see. You don't zoom it in or zoom it out. And we took the site, and you can see here in these numbers indicate those balloons, as shown on the earlier exhibit. And then what we did was we dropped in Phase One, and in this case, the Resource Center. There is an existing cell tower. You can get a sense of the scale of that relative to what else is out here. And we showed what this would look like, including a seven-foot sound wall here along the boundary with Cabot Ranch Estates, and this, of course, is without landscaping. There's the monument wall in front. Then we added landscaping as though it were at a seven- to 10-year maturity, and we also looked at it with Phase Two plugged in here. Now, what we did next was we went around the corner and said, okay, based on the scale of those buildings, what might we see? And what I did was I drove, and I'd stop and get out and look until I could see a balloon, essentially. So it wasn't perfect science, but it was pretty good science, and keep in mind, this was done in early spring, and so a lot of the trees had not leafed out, so we had greater visibility than we might in late spring or summer. One of the interesting things about the location of this project and about the topography here on Sierra College that surprised us frankly is the fact that you've got some ridge lines, and these are 100-foot contours along here, that between the vegetation and the natural topography really do a fantastic job of helping block views to whatever might get built along here. As you come up Sierra College, but for a couple of views that you might have right across from Bayside, as you head up, you really can't see anything because of this ridgeline formation. As you get around here to the east and to the south, this ridgeline blocks views to that building, so you have to get all the way down here to basically Cabot Stallman and Barton Road before you can get past this elevation and start to see some of the buildings. We also looked, when we were working with this Loomis neighborhood, they were concerned, given their proximity. We flew the balloons a second time, or a third time, I should say, for them to confirm that in fact, given the topography, this formation here is a bit higher than the site. They do not have any views of the buildings there. So from Barton at Cabot Stallman, you can see here, and it's difficult in this lighting, but you can see at the top here a couple of those balloons, and so what we did was we dropped in the buildings, Phase Two there, Phase One here. So yes, you will see some buildings on the ridge top, and I don't know, EJ, if we need to turn down the lights, or if perhaps the exhibits that you have in your packets might better illustrate, but suffice it to say that yes, there is visibility, but it's minimal above the tree line. Moving further west, about the eastern edge of the wholesale nursery on the Andrews property, you're obviously closer. Here's the existing cell tower. Now we have a view of more of the ridgeline, more balloons, and therefore, there will be more visibility on this building. Again, Phase One there, Phase Two back in there. One of the things that we looked at, and this is based on some feedback that we received, have we done the right thing? Have we really addressed and minimized impacts with the earth tones? And a suggestion was made that perhaps what you might consider, even though you've got earth tones, maybe you should break up the massing, not architecturally, but from a color standpoint. And so this was an option that we came up with by blocking out this area here, a little bit darker. We didn't render that in the visual simulation, but it appears as though, and I think you might get a sense just at a quick glance, my eyes tell me that that could further reduce the visual impact because you break this mass up, and that's something the applicant is willing to do. As a matter of fact, this does show it here in this simulation. So it makes it look a little bit smaller, breaks up that massing. Further up and around the corner, we did not do the actual building simulation here. We're just above the Cabot Ranch Estates entry, but you can see here the rooftop of this existing neighboring residence relative to the balloon elevations here, relative to the office building and the homes in Rockland on the other side of Sierra College. And so based on the grading, based on sliding the buildings back and lowering the massing, you can see that it's essentially consistent with the existing buildings there. Now, the other thing we did was go out and just look where else might we be able to see those buildings? We didn't render this in the visual simulation, but I was basically on a balloon hunt. Again, pointing out that these natural ridges here really do block the views from multiple areas. I was most surprised, and I drove every little private street here off of Cabot Stallman, coming up to the end of those, looking to see if these neighbors who lived close to the south end of the property might have views, and but for a couple of the neighbors right in here at our southeast corner, the trees and the ridgeline block these views. So starting back over here on Barton again, we've seen this. This is before we get to the Cabot Stallman intersection. Yes, you will be able to see some of the buildings there. Moving to where Cabot Stallman takes a 90-degree turn to the south through the poles and the trees here, yes, you will be able to see some of the building edges. This shot number three here is at Crestview Lane, and that is where, given their proximity, as you approach the driveway and from the backyards, yeah, you will see more of these buildings. But what's interesting is what I saw from some of those other neighboring properties weren't the balloons, but the existing very large estate homes that had been constructed as part of Cabot Ranch Estates. And so this is not new ground. This is not a protected scenic corridor or ridgeline. This is just a different use in the same location. So finally, the fourth shot on this was further west on Cabot Stallman. You notice the trees here are not leafed out, but we were able to find some balloons up there on that ridgeline. I mentioned that I'd gone to each of these, driven up each of these lanes, taking shots, trying to find out whether we'd missed something from those other visual simulations. In our neighborhood outreach effort, in addition to meetings with Rockland residents, the Loomis residents here on Sierra Ridge, I also invited all 62 neighbors to a series of three meetings, sending out information about the project, indicating where it was, and a little disappointed, but I had scheduled this in my office, so I had other things to do, but on all three nights, nobody came to see me. And I've called a couple of them back to let them know about the meeting. I did not hear back. There may be somebody here today. But for the most part, given the fact that this project is up on top here, minimal impacts, really no different visually than what they see now with the homes that have been constructed, really more concerns about drainage, making sure that the retention pond functions so that the parking lots and other impervious surfaces, i.e. rooftops, don't end up changing the drainage characteristics and impacting these folks downstream. These, as I mentioned, I went back because the Loomis neighborhood was concerned they had not been notified of the balloon exercise. They were convinced that these buildings would be visible from at least some of their homes. Flew them again, went in every backyard, could not find a single balloon, again because of the ridge and topographic formation. These are views from Hidden Valley Place, which is west off of Cabot Stallman. I showed you this earlier. This is from Baywood. This is Crestview, which is the one that I pointed out backs up to the property, so yes, they will see some buildings. Again, this particular neighbor is concerned. She said, you know, nothing's proposed down here. I'm fine with this. I just want to make sure that we're not going to be impacted by drainage. This is... There's a dirt road east of Myers Lane, and there are a couple balloons that were visible in there. This is at 5405 Cabot Stallman. Again, there are a couple balloons right at the ridge top, and then one other here at 5565 where you could see houses in Cabot Ranch Estates, but balloons were back over on this side and were not visible from here. I mentioned that this is not a protected scenic corridor. It's not a protected ridge top. Those of us that have been around for a while have seen a lot of changes. This is what Sierra College looked like in 1993. This is the site here, and in 2010, you've got all this development in Rockland and Roseville, and then you've got the Cabot Ranch Estates that is still in the process of being built out, as well as some of the homes down here. So again, there have been significant changes over the years to this ridgeline from a standpoint of what's been constructed. I think we've talked about the ridgeline effect sufficiently. Scale-wise, though, this is the actual footprint of one of the neighboring residences. We actually went on Google Earth, and you can lay down a GIS line, because I was curious, how does that compare to the footprint of some of these others? Now, clearly, these are larger, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a 40,000 square foot footprint versus about 18,000 square feet here. So twice as large, but not completely out of character with the surrounding area and the scale of what has gone on here in Granite Bay. So here you see the square footage of the footprint of each of those, and what we did just out of curiosity, we said, well, what if instead of a church, the underlying zoning does allow for similar development as Cabot Ranch Estates, so 4.6-acre lots? What if we were to come in and instead put homes up here? Well, they would likely be as visible as these buildings. Anybody who would want to build here would want to take advantage of that view shed, and you can see from a relative standpoint, we're a lot closer to Sierra College with this one here, but you would have massing that would not be completely out of character in comparison to what's being proposed, and you would still have view impacts. I mentioned earlier that there was from... This is the north end of the Bayside parking lot. From here, Sierra College winds up, Cabot Ranch Estates, homes here. There's a possible view right up in here. Never saw any balloons. This was a subsequent shot, just going out and trying to re-verify. What we've got along Sierra College now are some fairly sizable structures. This one was not on Google Earth, so I'm not sure what the square footage is, but I believe it's larger than the one that we were able to outline and plot. This is another one that's finished. It's 120 feet off of Sierra College as opposed to the 295-plus. It's another one here that, nice to see this back under construction that sat empty and weathered for quite some time. And then as you get to Cabot Ranch Place here, you can see across to the office building and these homes, and the church would be sitting back in here, but keep in mind, as EJ pointed out, there are two lots across here, and what we're likely to see in a number of years are going to be two other large houses that will block the view of the church as you head northbound on Sierra College. So with that, I'll turn it back over to EJ.
Thank you, Dave. Let's go back one. So I want to talk about the just Granite Bay MAC real quick. Obviously, we went to the Granite Bay MAC over the last several years, many, many times as information items, just seeking input on the project and keeping everybody updated on what was going on. So finally, May 2nd, we went to the Granite Bay MAC. It was scheduled as an action item. The MAC ended up voting six-one to recommend approval of the project as proposed. There was a lot of discussion nonetheless, some of the areas of concern that were talked about, traffic congestion at surrounding intersections along Sierra College Boulevard, the impact on the local view shed as seen from the southeast of the project site, consistency with the community plan policy regarding serving local needs and the appropriateness of the proposed use instead of development consistent with the underlying rural estate zoning, which Dave was just showing on the slide. So that was the MAC, and so what we're asking for you today is to take several actions, and I'll leave these up here if you make it to this point. We're asking that you certify the environmental impact report for the proposed Amazing Facts Ministry project, including the minor revisions to the draft and final EIR, and adopt the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Second, we're asking that you approve the minor use permit to allow a house of worship facility and the roof-mounted broadcasting antenna, which also requires the minor use permit. And lastly, approve the variance to allow a seven-foot-high sound wall along the west property line, and that's all subject to the findings in the staff report. So that concludes our report. Take it up back to the Commission if we can. Questions from staff? There's a lot of people here who can respond, or whatever your pleasure is.
I just have one question. You made reference to a resource building.
Yes.
What is the function of that building?
The resource building, it's... The purpose is to support the ministry by housing and distributing materials such as the CDs, tapes, periodicals. There are deliveries associated with that building. I'm just reading here, up to seven trucks per day may visit the site, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but I don't think, believe these are big semi-trucks. I think there were a total of one or two semi-trucks. All the other trucks are your smaller-sized delivery trucks. And that's as... From a staff standpoint, it's an ancillary use to the house of worship, but it is a separate building. It is a, you know, a pretty significant use.
Will they be producing materials there, printing and that kind of stuff?
I don't believe there's any publishing going on. Yeah, I don't believe so.
So it's just in-and-out type of material?
Yeah, and early on, I think that was part of the proposal, but that's not to occur at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the mitigation factors, or the mitigating factors might be better put, is the fact that this is a 74-acre parcel, of which 17 acres is being used, right? More or less, kind of sort of.
Correct.
And the implication is that by leaving the rest of the property undeveloped, or as Dave put it, there's nothing proposed for the rest of the project, that that would be used to lessen the density or somehow mitigate the impact this would have. What assurances are there that the remainder of the property will remain that way? You talked about a cultural resource that was going to be protected, but what about the rest of it?
Well, in the very beginning stages of this project, even I think before an official application submission, there was a proposal to put other uses down on that portion of the site. I want to say dormitories and other uses. You know, listening to concerns of the neighbors at the time, no one thought that was a great idea, so that proposal went away. So if they wanted to come in today, there's a use permit on the... So, if they wanted to come in today, there's a use permit on the property. They would have to come back and revise a use permit. That would just be one portion of it. They would have to go through environmental review. Probably the biggest hurdle to developing that site down below are all the resources down there that need to be protected. There are significant cultural resources. And, you know, like I said, we had several meetings with the United Auburn Indian Community, and there's a lot of things going down there, which I'm not sure if you ever did propose to develop that, what you would actually be able to do down there. And that doesn't even go into the other resources, like your wetlands and things like that. So, from a, just from an environmental standpoint, to develop down below would probably be pretty difficult. But even if someone did come in with a proposal, they would have to get an entitlement to do so.
So, if I heard what you said correctly, you're saying that technically, there's nothing to prevent it, but it might be a practical difficulty?
Correct.
Let me ask you about the relationship with the city of Rockland and the town of Loomis. Now, I know the town of Loomis wrote a letter that was in the EIR. And one of the comments that you made was that while we can't require the city of Rockland's concerns to be satisfied or mitigated prior to approval of this project, one of their conditions, I noticed in the conditions of approval, is they have to make a good faith effort to settle up with the city of Rockland. Yet, I know from having said on this commission for quite a while that it is the, if not the policy, certainly the practice of the town of Loomis to sue every single one of these things that comes along. Wouldn't it be better to require the applicant to reach some sort of an agreement with the surrounding neighborhoods prior to us approving this?
Yeah, before I even comment on that, we do have experts, you know, with our other departments that have been dealing directly with Rockland and Loomis and have been involved in those conversations. I'd probably defer to, and Steph, I'm looking at Sarah, Sarah's looking at Stephanie, but both of them are...
You're going to put this on poor Sarah?
Both of them have been really engaged in the talks regarding the, you know, the whole traffic circulation issue, so.
I'll speak immediately.
Thank you.
Good morning. Stephanie Holloway with Public Works. Yeah, to answer your question, we have, we have just recently been, Ken Graham in my department, who's the director, has been in talks with the city of Rockland as well as the town of Loomis to try to come to some sort of agreement on the issue of the cross-jurisdictional impacts. So, that said, you know, it has not been a direction to me to, you know, require that of the applicant. The applicant has already, you know, put that effort in, as well as department staff, department heads, to try to work out an agreement. But at this point, there's no condition of approval for that. But we are working on it. You're welcome.
Oh, Stephanie, just one other thing. You know, looking at your lane configuration, so really, the only thing you have directly in control is what's in front of the property going over to Loomis's jurisdiction and then across to Rockland, because I see there looks like a deceleration lane coming in and just a little bit of an acceleration lane coming out of the property where they've given land for that. But everything else is just existing, striping on existing roadways.
Correct. Yeah, so the right-of-way for Sierra College in front of the project is the jurisdiction of the city of Rockland. This property does abut that right-of-way, and the property is within the jurisdiction of the county, which is why we're here today. With the street improvement ordinance that the county has for, you know, future improvements to roadways, there is a requirement for roadway dedication along this property for the ultimate improvements along Sierra College. Now, more than likely, that dedication would be to us, but in the future, be transferred to possibly the city of Rockland, because they do maintain the rest of the road. So, although they fall under our street improvement ordinance for right-of-way dedication, ultimately, that section of the road with the additional right-of-way widening would be part of the city of Rockland's jurisdiction. So, yes, to answer your question, the part that the county has authority over would be the street improvement ordinance section, so the frontage improvements along the property frontage, as well as, I believe, to the west, any widening that's necessary to be able to accommodate the right-turn lane for northbound into the Night Watch intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions while I'm here?
I have a question.
Sure.
While you're there, it was mentioned that the unavoidable traffic impact would basically come from Phase Two. Now, in the county, doesn't, isn't there a requirement for a regional traffic fee to mitigate these off-site improvement, different intersections around, or is this already included, the fee included, or doesn't it apply here? Why is a future development not required to mitigate some of this stuff to make it unavoidable?
Well, I'll try to maybe explain our fee program structure, and then maybe explain the fair share condition that's in there. So, the fee programs cover, there's a multitude of fee programs that this project will be subject to the countywide, which is basically improvements within the area of Granite Bay and the Granite Bay Community Plan. So, they pay a traffic fee into that program. They also pay a traffic fee into the SPARDA program, which covers a number of regional improvements. One of those is Sierra College Boulevard. And they also pay a city-county fee for a number of improvements that the city of Roseville and Plaister County have identified as cross-jurisdictional impacts. So, those three programs have identified projects within their capital improvement programs. Where the project has an impact, say, Rockland Road and Sierra College, that is not covered by one of those fee programs, we typically take a fair share or require a mitigation. If it's in our jurisdiction, we require, you know, some type of build improvement. So, because it's outside of our jurisdiction, we have written a condition of approval that says make a good faith effort to pay your fair share to the city of Rockland. Because it's not in an identified fee program, it still have an impact, so this is a mechanism to try, or to mitigate for their portion of the impact at those locations. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you.
Let me see, I'd like to go back to the area down below. We were talking about what might be developed down there. So, in terms of, now, this is what FBX 20 acres? And so, I guess that could be subdivided into a couple pieces and sold off, but what type of development would be able to go down there without a rezone?
It's a farm zoning, so you're, you know, pretty much limited to large parcels, agricultural-type uses and things like that. And then, you know, you gotta remember the site, you know, you have, it starts up pretty high on Sierra College Boulevard, and then it's got some pretty steep topography coming down, so there's, you know, limited level land down below also.
Okay, but in this case, in dorms would be permitted down there? As long as I could get through the environmental documentation?
There'd be an entitlement required. I think I'd have to go back to look at what was actually required with the dormitory-type uses on the farm zone district. If you bear with me, I can, I'll pull up the ordinance just to see exactly what we're talking about. You have it open already?
Yes.
Paul's already there.
Page 71. So, as far as uses, that can happen in the farm zoning, there's many uses. Subject to a use permit, you're looking at community centers, houses of worship, libraries, museums, membership organizations, parks, playgrounds, golf courses, colleges and universities, elementary schools, secondary schools, those type of uses. Also, there's services, uses that are allowed with approval of a use permit, cemeteries, daycare facilities, correctional institutions, hospitals, veterinary clinics, public utilities facilities, public safety facilities. So, very wide range of uses, but they're all subject to approval of use permit, just like we're processing today.
Okay, thank you. That answers it for me.
Did you have?
Well, if I may, I wanted to attempt to provide Commissioner Brenton all a little bit more background in response to a very good question. When I first got involved in this project, I was not oblivious to the history of Bayside. And as you know, on the last church that I represented, there was an appeal on that. And so, one of the reasons that I advised my client, and they prudently went along with that advice, to look carefully at all these impacts, was because I wanted to try to avoid, and I think you and others on this commission know, that I try to do my level best working with the community before we ever get to this point. But, well, thank you. So, aside from the visual simulation, even without that letter from Loomis, we anticipated that there could be a problem there. And so, what I did was I set out to meet, as I mentioned earlier, not only with Rockland residents and those residents in Granite Bay, but I contacted that neighborhood, and I happen to know a couple of folks that live there, met with them. We had a couple of meetings there, the second, which included not just myself, but our traffic engineer, our civil engineer, and the Loomis Town Manager. My first meeting with that neighborhood, we heard their concerns, and those were concerns that were raised back in '05, '06, when this project first came forward with, as EJ said, a site plan that covered the, pretty much the entirety of the site.
What neighborhood are you talking about?
I'm sorry?
Which neighborhood are you talking about?
I'm talking about, it's, well, it's Ridge Park Drive, Sierra View Estates.
Okay, I know, I know where it is.
When I met with that neighborhood, they'd raised concerns about ingress and egress onto Sierra College, because in the years since they've developed that and folks have moved in, traffic has obviously increased. What I told them was, we would explore different options. We would look at ways to perhaps improve that. It wasn't going to include a signal. We knew Rockland was not really in favor of a left-turn pocket out, but that we would explore different options, and we'd get back to them. And we went through an exercise with our civil engineer and our traffic engineer and talked with the county about it. And there was a solution, but it was about a half million dollars, and that was beyond what my client would be able to spend. This project with both phases is about a million dollars in traffic impact fees alone. And so, to think about another half million to deal with a neighborhood where there is no impact identified in the EIR, which requires mitigation, but this was our effort to reach out, look at what their concerns were, and see what we could do to address those. So, circling back with them, I've said, you know, here's what we've come up with. It's too expensive. We're looking at some other options. And I, just coincidentally, some folks from Rockland who I had met with had raised concerns about the fact that although we were going to extend the two-lane configuration through Night Watch beyond the frontage of the property, it was going to taper back down to that one-lane northbound, three-lane southbound, as we headed down the hill past San Juan Water. And couldn't we do something about it? And a light bulb went off, and I started making some phone calls, and we started digging into it a little bit, and we met with Rockland. And it turns out that that was a configuration from a different day and a different time. And in fact, maybe there was a way to re-stripe that. And by doing that, there would be some benefits, not just to the Loomis neighborhood, because now you've got two lanes in which they could make a right turn onto. But in fact, it would reduce the amount of time they may wait to make a turn out of that neighborhood, and it would provide more of a regional, or at least community-wide benefit. Those efforts, and in conversations with Loomis and Rockland and Plaister County, are the things that we've attempted to do to, if you will, minimize or reduce the risk or the likelihood that there may be litigation. It's a slippery slope, and as Stephanie indicated, there's not a condition that's currently proposed, and it's because there is no impact, therefore, the county's not going to require us to do that. I feel compelled, and my client agrees, that we have offered it up to the community. It appears as though there are sufficient benefits to that, that we are willing to make that a condition, but that condition is going to need to be subject to Rockland's approval, and they couldn't approve this until we have a certified EIR and an approved project. So, they will need to approve it. We would have to have an agreement with Rockland and SPARDA in terms of fee credits. And it's my understanding that with those, we significantly reduce the likelihood of Loomis taking some kind of legal action. There are some intersection warning signs we've also talked about that we're willing to install, to remind folks that there may be cars entering Sierra College from there. And again, these are things that, through a series of conversations and meetings with Rockland and Loomis and engineering a survey, Public Works, I think we may be close to working those out. So, I hope that better answers your question.
It does. It shows me what you've done. My concern is this, I don't want to approve a project here that's basically a hot potato and throw it in the lap of the folks of Rockland or the folks of Loomis. Now, I understand the concerns of those people on Ridge Park Drive. They're right close to it.
Correct.
But my recollection is that the town of Loomis's letter referred to Sierra College as a whole, and they're infamous for doing that, you know, all the way up and over to 193 and Lincoln and so forth, the impact on that. You know, maybe you won't be able to reach some sort of agreement with them, but I think it would be whoofy to at least talk to them more about the overall impact as opposed to just the other one. On the other hand, I don't want to have the town of Loomis to have a veto power over this project once the county approves it, so it's kind of, it has me on the fence. But I'm glad to hear what you did. Thanks for telling me.
Okay, at this point, I guess we will open it up to the public for comment. Anybody liking to speak? Please do so.
Hi, my name is Steve Taggart. I'm one of the adjacent landowners in Cabot Ranch Estates there, and I'm here presenting a letter of opposition to the Amazing Facts Ministry plans. My property actually abuts corner to corner with the property for Amazing Facts. The, when I bought the property, I bought it with the intent of designing and building my wife's, my dream home with a view out over Granite Bay. For years, we had driven along Sierra College admiring the views on both sides of the ridge. We said we would buy there if there was property available, and we did buy when it became available. We expected the quiet enjoyment in a rural setting with the absence of lights interfering with our rural views, the sounds of the countryside, and our greenbelt, which we purchased as part of our property in the backyard with the views of wild animals, including the coyotes, the turkeys, and the hawks that populated this greenbelt. We felt that the zoning for large parcel single homes and the farm zoning adjacent precluded uses that would interfere with this quiet enjoyment. Some of my specific concerns are these. I don't feel that this is a minor-use variance. This is creating a walled, lighted compound that is a regional center, not a small, local church for the use of the surrounding neighbors. Two, this is not just a church facility for worship. This is a seven-day-a-week facility that includes a year-round seminary, an audiovisual production facility, a gymnasium in a major complex with multiple buildings, and a 900-space lighted parking lot in a walled compound. This much larger, this is much larger, as I understand it, than the Bayside facility. And Bayside was already, has already created a significant impact on the region and created quite a dispute when it went through your processes here, as you've already acknowledged, Dave. This is an even larger project from my understanding, and it is being placed in a location that is a large parcel rural and farm-use area. It is not near Sierra College Boulevard, near Douglas, near a commercial regional center. And I think to compare the few buildings across the street from it as, you know, being a mitigating factor to the fact that it's just more commercial development with what's across the street, I think that's unrealistic based on the size of those two facilities. I'm concerned about thousands of round trips that will significantly impact traffic flow on Sierra College. This is already impacted by the traffic related to Sierra College at one end and Bayside at the other. This will create more noise, more lighting, more congestion that will interfere with the quiet enjoyment of the neighbors. The properties adjacent to the parking lot and facility have their backyards and back windows of their rural properties impacted by this inappropriate juxtaposition. They, their value and their quiet enjoyment is also ruined. I have spoken to one of the longstanding realtors in the regions, and he feels that the value and salability of all the properties along the ridge are being negatively impacted by this. by this. In summary, I don't feel this is a minor variance, but a major deviation from the zoning and from the Granite Bay regional plan. Even, in addition, their own EIR notes and the discussion today said that there are several impacts that they cannot mitigate. And mitigation, even if that is done for some of the others, still leaves significant impact to the neighbors. It may meet your requirements for mitigation, but it doesn't meet my requirements for my quiet enjoyment. Speaking to the visibility studies that have been done, and the balloon studies, there's a big difference between sticking a balloon up in the trees and seeing a mass of a three, two- or three-story building wall. If, you know, the houses that were mentioned on the ridge, adjacent to my property, if they just put balloons there, they wouldn't look like much either. But as you can see, there is a very significant impact with a larger building, and these are much larger buildings and taller buildings than the houses that are on that ridge. So I'd like to thank you for your consideration as an adjacent landowner.
Thank you.
Steve, before you sit down, is it the use so much, or is it just the scale of the project to which you object?
I don't have a problem with a small church that works with the local community. I don't see this as that. I see it as a massive facility that's year-round, seven days a week, with school and seminary going on there, a 900-place parking spot along the Boulevard and adjacent to our properties.
So is it fair to say that if this were a small neighborhood church, as you might envision in other neighborhoods, you wouldn't be standing here today?
Correct.
Thank you.
I do have a letter which I would submit essentially summarizing that.
My name is Robert Sands. I live at 4630 Longview Drive in Rockland. It's Sierra View Estates right across. Previous gentleman, actually, fortunately for you all, stole a lot of my thunder, because a lot of the same concerns that he has, and I'm on the opposite side, are mine as well. There are a couple of things that haven't been mentioned today. The first one is that the process and what they plan to do with the facility, according to the EIR, will have 97 employees at the church site. The discussion about the traffic is always focused on what happens on Saturday. What I want to know is what is the mitigation when those 97 employees show up Tuesday morning in late September, when Sierra College is in full session? That's not addressed at all. It's always talking about what happens on Saturday. But the fact of the matter is, this is going to be a facility that will be used seven days a week, and there will be traffic impacts when Sierra College is very, very heavily traveled. Have an issue with that. Second one, I find it somewhat disingenuous to say that there are large houses up there. I agree, there are large houses up there. I see them. But none of those houses have 2,000 people coming over on Saturday morning to sit and visit. None of those houses have 97 people showing up to work at their house every day. So part of it is to say that this is not a significant impact is not consistent with the way that land is being, was originally designed. And as was pointed out, when I moved into that neighborhood, that land was all undeveloped. And I specifically went and saw what the zoning was for all of the land around there. There's been an allusion to the property across, which is 50,000 square feet, not 200,000 square feet, and that was zoned commercial many, many years ago. So when I bought my house, I knew a commercial establishment was going in there. When I bought my house, I also thought that across the way, maybe there would be even an 18,000-square-foot home with a few people in it, not something that would be 200,000 square feet, not something that would have 97 employees during the week, and not something that would truly disrupt the atmosphere in that area. So I thank you very kindly for your consideration of my comments.
Mr. Sands, I'd like to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Taggart, and that is, is it the use or the scale to which you are most concerned?
It is the scale, as you asked, and as was said earlier. If this was a 300-person church, I would think it was a wonderful addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
We're racing to see you today. Could I just indicate to you first, you have much nicer facilities than I have been in in previous planning commission hearings years ago up here. And further, you have a great staff who's been very helpful, and I appreciate that. My name is Susan Ziegler. I live across the street and down, I live at the corner of Scarborough and Sierra College Boulevard. I have several concerns, but we'll do them quickly. One, I have no opposition to a church. Supreme Court has found consistently that churches are appropriate and compatible in any zone. Local jurisdictions can require a use permit, which Placer County does, and the purpose for that is to obtain conditions that will mitigate any impacts of that facility. I am concerned about traffic impacts. I'm fully aware that Sierra College is a major arterial, it's going to carry a lot of traffic, and was built to, and was intended to carry a lot of traffic. It's going to continue to be there, but I am concerned about the hoped-for situation of striping going on there. Condition 38 in your staff report, or on page 38, rather, in your staff report, it talks about these agreements being arrived at, consistent with occupancy permits for Phase 1 or Phase 2. I would like to see those agreements be documented concurrent with the Phase 1 occupancy, rather than hoping they get worked out later on in the process. Certainly, I think you could do a memorandum of understanding with those other jurisdictions, that this will occur when and where. But I agree with the commissioner that indicates that these have to be done prior to construction on that site. The community is entitled to know that those striping will, efforts will transpire. I feel it will help mitigate the traffic. It's not going to mitigate any of those impacts at the intersection of Night Watch and Sierra College. Those are shown in the final EIR as being level LOSC or D, which do not meet the consistency requirements of the Rockland Community Plan. They're going to be difficult, they're going to be unbearable, it's hard in the morning getting out at Night Watch and Sierra College, just because of the level of traffic. But you live with that, you know it's going to be there. The prior speaker spoke about the commercial development at Night Watch and Sierra College, and he's correct, that's been shown as commercial for years, on the general plan for Placer County even, before it was Rockland. But when the permit came in for that, they were limited to business and professional uses, not commercial uses, which reduced the traffic impacts significantly at that intersection. Between the traffic significant impacts there at that intersection, and on down at Scarborough with Sierra School, you've got some major interruptions in that traffic along Sierra College Boulevard. So the timing of those signals is going to be critical. My concern is not with the church. My concern is with the other uses that are proposed on that site. It's going to be a major mail distribution facility, as I understand it, if they've got an 11,000-square-foot warehouse with 14 truck trip-ins per week, I think it is, Mr. Rivaldi, instead of 14 per day. But that's still a significant warehouse, that they're going to be doing distribution of their pamphlets, and their books, and their CDs. They have talked about a production facilities. If you go on the website for Amazing Facts Ministry, it talks about it being a worldwide ministry, and so they are going to be sending out materials throughout the world. That certainly is part of their mission, and I have no objection to that. I do have objection to it being here on this site. I think that's more of an industrial-type use, certainly a commercial use, that isn't tied in with the definition of house of worship. So I think that's my concern. It's the intensity of the uses. They talk about a commercial kitchen, at least I understand it's a commercial kitchen, because they're talking about community-wide dinners and things of that type. They may want to look at how that affects their tax structure. Because as a church, they're probably not going to be exempt if they've got a commercial kitchen in there. Certainly a question they would want to look at. As I say, I have no objection to the church. I am concerned about the traffic impacts, and if they're considered as part of conditions of approval, that they be agreed to in writing by all of the jurisdictions and the principal parties, prior to occupancy of the buildings for Phase 1, then I think that's as far as you can go. I think that's your limit. But my concern is with those other facilities on-site that I don't think relate to a house of worship. Thank you.
My name is Steve Rowe. I live at 4829 Echo Ridge Road, adjacent, it's across the street from Sierra College. And most of my concerns have been addressed by other people, I'll just weigh in to reinforce those, and I do have a, I'll put on file with the clerk. Again, I have no opposition to a regular, community-sized church, but unless each of the 300 families that currently is in that church is going to drive three cars to the services, we probably don't really need 900 parking spots. The scale, again, is the biggest problem, and the fact that it is essentially a business, although a benevolent one, and maybe a nonprofit one, it's a business nonetheless, don't think it has an appropriate spot in our semi-rural residential neighborhood. Additionally, nothing has been done that I can see to address possible traffic impacts on the neighborhood across the street. I know that the Sierra School, she mentioned, in mornings and evenings, we see significant increase in traffic on Echo Ridge Road, and it does concern me as far as the safety goes, because there are a lot of small children that live along there. I can't imagine that the church, proposed church, wouldn't have some additional impacts on our street, too, and I haven't seen anybody address those issues. I'm not sure if they have, but I haven't been able to find anything like that. So again, my opposition to the project is strong, but not so much for the use, but just rather the overwhelming scale of it. To me, it looks like, you know, it would be almost like putting Sam's Club there, which I'm sure you guys would never approve. So I'll let it go at that and file my letter. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Harris. I live in Granite Bay. I've been following this project since it started way back. I've gone to all the hearings and the MAC meetings, and since Dave got involved, they have improved it. And I appreciate how they've tried to work with the community and work out some of the concerns. But if you look at the purpose, the number-one project, objective of this project is to accommodate the multifaceted ministry that supports their local and worldwide mission, and a conflict with the Granite Bay Community Plan, which cannot be adequately mitigated. When I look through the EIR, they say it's generally consistent with the Granite Bay Community Plan. Generally consistent, that's kind of a broad term. The membership, according to them, is now 300, and it will increase, but I wonder how many of those people will be coming from our community, which our community plan says institutionals should serve the community. We have currently about 21,000 people, we will build out at about 26,000. Bayside advertises they get 10,000 people a week attending their services. We have a new Catholic church on Cabot Stallman, and we have a Mormon church there on Cabot Stallman, and Bayside on Cabot Stallman, and a lot of other different churches in our community that serve our 21,000 people. I also am concerned that this might be precedent-setting, because Bayside, as you remember, wanted to go 200,000 square feet, and they were limited to, I think it was 94, around in there. There was a goal put on it for that. And this church comes in, gets approved at 208,000. And I know Bayside's watching this, and they're looking at expanding. So are they going to come back in a year or so and say, we need to expand our buildings? You did it up there, we can do it down here. And that could be a problem in the future, because Bayside is already hugely impacting our neighborhood, and I think it's gone way beyond what county planning or anybody else thought that was going to amount to there. And they do try to, the church itself tries to monitor itself. I think what happens is we need to rethink allowed uses in this zone district, and I've been saying this for years, ever since Bayside came in, and that was also an agricultural zoned area. And with a minor use permit to allow this, doesn't seem right. I think you need to go back and look at allowed uses in this zone area. I said this 10 years ago, and I still think we need to do that, because here we go again with a very large church in an agricultural zoned area. So, thank you.
If I may. You said that the Bayside is impacting the community, the Bayside Church, and I assume you mean negatively. How, can you tell us how that's impacting the community?
I'm just glad I don't live any closer to it than I do, because of the traffic. And they do bus in, they have people parking in lots all around and bus in. They also have events going on all the time, all kinds of seminars and things. Every time you go by, you'll see a big banner up saying, you know, we're going to have this event or this event. And, you know, that's impacting our neighborhood. Traffic, intensity of use, really. It's not just a one-day, they, like for Christmas time, they'll have 21 services. Easter time, 21 services, that's a lot. It's not just on the holiday itself, it's all leading up to it. Lot, lot of intense use there.
Thank you, Sandy. Anybody else?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Alan Davis. I am a retired colonel in the United States Air Force. We settled here, neither my wife nor I, neither my wife nor I are from California, I'm from Texas, and my wife is from Michigan. We chose to settle in this area for a multitude of reasons, one of those actually being the Granite Bay Church, of which we're a member. We find that it subscribes to the values and the ideals that we embrace within the denomination of which we're a member. I'd like to address just a few of the ideas that were presented by some of the opposers of this particular issue. One of the things that somewhat concerns me is that, I have attended a few of these MAC meetings now, but I've only heard minimal dissension, whereas I'm somewhat confused as to why some of these opposing arguments were not presented within the MAC, but rather waited until they were presented here. One of the things I wanted to address in particular, I can understand the viewpoint that these individuals have, especially living right next to the property, there might be a lot of noise, perhaps, you know, with the construction area, before things really get squared away, it might be an eyesore on their behalf, and they may be having some pollution from an auditory standpoint. I can sympathize with that. On the other hand, what I would like to say is that the zone is indeed set aside for such usage, and that I can tell you that the research group that actually went and did all the work, has gone through painstaking efforts to ensure that as many of the dissenting views have been mitigated, or even eliminated. So to that end, Amazing Facts and the Granite Bay Church together have sought to appease the community insofar as it is possible. Now, there has been a concern about this being a house of worship going seven days a week. Well, I appeal to you. If a house of worship is merely something that somebody attends once a week, then I ask if really faith might be genuine. The whole purpose here is ministry and evangelism, which is not a one-day-a-week thing. And because Amazing Facts and the Granite Bay Church have embraced a worldwide ministry, we can't leave that just to one day a week. It has to be every single day. And I understand there's some commercial zoning right across the way. I don't know how many people actually work in that 50,000-square-foot area, but I can tell you that I've driven over there a few times. There are a lot of cars there, it's very, very difficult to find a parking place at times. I couldn't tell you the number, but we're talking upwards of 100 people at Amazing Facts at any given time, four days out of the week. It's not a seven-day-a-week in terms of people will be there working every day. Yes, Saturday will be the highlight in terms of worship service. But then again, that is going to be minimal to begin with, and it will crescendo over time. But I believe that the mitigating factors that have been put into place, or that have been considered in terms of the traffic throughput, is the best that we can do, given the situation that we have at this particular point. So to that end, I am in favor of this project, and I do not have a prepared statement to give the board here, but I just wanted to let you know how I felt about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we hear from anybody else, suggest a five-minute break?
I can use one.
All right. Thank you.
You're our leader.
of Loomis. I just want to say I appreciate what the applicant's efforts have been recently. I've been there about seven months, and a few months ago, we started meeting with Dave and Ken Anderson from the traffic engineering side, and Ken from Placer County, the Public Works Director, and residents along Ridge Park Drive, and that's where our concern was, primarily focused was the residents in the Ridge Park Drive subdivision. We really appreciate their offer and their proposal to do the two-way, two-lane striping both ways along Sierra College Boulevard. As all of you probably know, you drive it now. It's very confusing to the motorists. You're at one lane, you're at two lanes, you're three lanes one way, one lane the other way. You're jockeying in and back and forth. I think, I think that kind of striping will make a big regional effect and make the traffic smoother in there. I agree with their analysis that, you know, it will provide for larger breaks in the traffic, which could help those folks on Ridge Park Drive. Eventually, that area, Sierra College, as I understand it, is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of six lanes wide. So it's a very major arterial in that area, and, you know, left-hand turns out of Ridge Park Drive will probably be prohibited in the future when we get that many lanes going. It will be a definite safety problem. So I do appreciate the striping plan. I appreciate the fact that, in just discussing with them the other day, they're willing to put some signs up indicating that there is an intersection there going both northbound and southbound on Sierra College Boulevard. What that does is it alerts the driver, "Hey, there may be somebody turning out here or turning in here," and it takes for that second, it gets them off the gas, and that's just another safety feature that's seen pretty much around the country that helps a lot. So our position is, and our border committee is, is we are satisfied that they've done what they've could at this point. We want to assure that both of those go in, the striping and the signage. They have agreed to do it. I know Rockland, I have met with their city manager before, and he was supportive of both the striping. He doesn't know about the signage yet, but the striping, and I'm sure I can talk him into the signage giving us right-of-way for that. I believe it can be conditioned, contrary to proper belief, and Commissioner Sevenon knows I have a little experience in this area.
Conditions?
So it can be conditioned that the striping plan is, that your approval of this particular project is conditional upon Rockland's approval of the striping plan as well. So, thank you very much.
Just, could I ask you just a little bit of clarification?
Sure.
We heard earlier that there's an effort going on between Rockland, Loomis, and the county. I guess that's where you're coming up with the thought that there's going to be eventually a six-lane road in this area, which would take a while?
Yeah, that's a long-term plans under Sparta, and as well as I've seen them under SAGCOG improvement plans for the year 2023, that timeframe.
So is this kind of, just, I mean, where are we at in the process?
That's a long-term situation, and they're forecasting growth, like more commercial centers, more development along Sierra College Boulevard, and as that occurs, that's when those improvements will go in on Sierra College Boulevard.
And is that related to the six-lane road, too, that you're talking about?
What's that?
Is this related to the six lanes?
Yes. That down the road, if future development increases the traffic on Sierra College Boulevard, you are going to have to expand that roadway to a number of lanes to accommodate that much traffic before your traffic flow starts to break down.
Okay, so theoretically, then, right-of-ways are being set aside and?
Yeah. As there are requirements, for example, as I understand it, just to explain it, right now, there are three lanes heading southbound, one heading northbound. The reason you have three lanes heading southbound is because when that subdivision that's across the street from the proposed project went in, they were required to grant the right-of-way to put those three lanes in. So as people who have right-of-way along Sierra College Boulevard get their development rights, they're required to grant the right-of-way also for the improvements to Sierra College Boulevard.
And that applies to this one, too?
Yes, yes, obviously.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Kristy Akers, President of Sierra Ridge Homeowners Association on Ridge Park Drive. I'd like to start out really by thanking Dave Cook. He has spent a tremendous amount of time with our homeowners association, visiting with us, reacting to concerns, so I'd like to publicly thank Dave for that. Really, our main concern at this point is traffic, and I'm here just to request that you do consider making it a conditional approval on the restriping project. So that is our main concern, and we are not opposed to the project should that be a condition of approval. Thank you.
Anyone else? Don't be bashful.
Good morning. My name is Frank Duper and live in Granite Bay, and I want to speak on behalf of the Granite Bay Seventh-day Adventist Church. We have grown, we're crowded, and we're looking forward to be able to move in to these new facilities. It's hard for us to have to set up and take down. We're very thankful for the hospitality and graciousness of the church that we're renting, but it means a lot of extra effort, and we're looking forward to getting a new home. I might also mention that I had the privilege of being president of Adventist Health on Douglas. I hope all of you have driven by there. Back in 84, 1984, we moved in. We are very, we were very happy to be making our home in Roseville, and I retired in 1998, and I am happy to say my predecessors are continuing to grow that facility, and I think they'll be soon before your commission asking for a permit to build on the vacant land next to the corporate office on 2100 Douglas. The employees are growing, and they need a church home. So I just urge you to vote favorable. We want to work with the community. I think you've seen that Adventist Health has worked with the community, even though we don't have a health facility in this area. We have many on the, throughout the western states, not only hospitals, ranging from 550 beds down to small rural hospitals, rural health clinics, and hundreds of rural health clinics and clinics. So this is the home office, and it requires a lot of staff. So I just hope you look favorable on it. God bless you. Appreciate the time with you this morning.
I have a question before you sit down, if I could. First of all, there's been some discussion about Granite Bay Church and Amazing Facts Ministry. What's the difference? Are they one and the same? I'm getting a little confused.
Well, we're really part of the same church. We, there is no difference.
Okay, so when people talk about the Granite Bay Church, they mean the Amazing Facts Ministry?
We're all on the same, same thought process, so.
Was any thought given to using the lot that apparently you have next to the Adventist Health offices for this church? That's on Douglas Boulevard, is it not?
While we all want to cooperate, that's really for a corporate office, and they'll be, I understand, using that lot for expansion of Adventist Health.
So I'll take that as a no? Okay. Thank you.
A gracious no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, gentlemen. My name's John Queitzvite. I'm the associate pastor at the Granite Bay Church that we're talking about. One of the things I would just like to share is in our community outreach, going out to the community in many different ways. We went to assisted livings. We went, we've had health fairs. We've done many things in the community, and I know some of the concerns were about during-the-week activities. And I was hoping you wouldn't limit us to just, you know, Saturdays, but we would expand, because we do go out into the community. We do help assisted living. We help in the community in whichever way we can. And even with the church that we're working with right now, I sit on some of their committees so we can work well together, so we're not affecting each other, so we're not overstepping. We're making it convenient for them, too. And so one of the things I noticed, especially with the trucks that you had, that were mentioned about coming in there, it seemed like that the place where they were delivering to is at, and I believe it would be the north side, which is away from, it would be more in that business district over there instead of where the bigger homes are. It seemed like they planned that. And so just, we just really are looking for a place to stay. We're growing. We right now are, we have, we deal with- We right now are, we have, we deal with pathfinders, which is sort of like Boy Scouts, but with the community and the church, and they do different things, and we're just needing room. We're just needing room, and so we're looking to want to, to grow a bit. And so we just want you to consider that. We appreciate you listening to us, and we really desire a place where we can make our home. Thanks.
And maybe I could ask you a question just for clarification. I think it's probably written down, but I'm a little bit confused. See, phase one is going to be a church, and then you're going to transition into phase two, and then the phase one building will become something different? Maybe you could describe the transition that's going on, and what are the uses that you're really seeing happen as this transition occurs from phase one to phase two?
Okay, I know with Amazing Facts, working closely with them, I know we do a lot of, on Saturday mornings, they do do media there, mainly for communities and those kind of things, and so it's very important for us with media. But with the church itself, we need to grow in an area. Now with Amazing Facts, the second phase, I haven't got really involved with the second phase really closely, but I know as we grow, we want to have the community have a place where they feel comfortable, where there's, some of their needs can be met, whether it's health, I mean, we do a lot of health, we're very interested on health. And so what we do a lot of times is we try to help the community in those areas as well. And so if there's people that want to come, we're going to expect growth of some sort. And so the second phase is sort of in the future. We have no real, as far as I'm concerned, and maybe one of you guys can help me out a little bit more, the second phase is a little bit farther in the future, and that's going, you know, as time permits. We don't have plans right at this point in time that I'm aware of to go ahead with that, but we want to be ready in case of that. So is that sort of answering?
Maybe I'm a little bit even more confused now.
Okay.
Just heard about.
I'm known for doing that once in a while, so.
Yeah, we heard about Amazing Facts Health on Granite Bay Boulevard, I mean, on Douglas Boulevard. And then we've heard about the Granite Bay Church and Amazing Facts Ministry. And so I guess.
Let me have.
Who's using this facility, whose facility is it that's going, that's being built?
We're definitely making it our home, no question about it. We're making it our home, but yet we reach out to the community, and at the same time with Amazing Facts, we're doing it with the world too in a sense.
So these are two separate organizations then?
We're actually working very closely together. I mean, we're one in the same, we're part of the same.
Well, I hear that, but I keep hearing two organizations almost.
Okay, why don't you help me out here, Doug?
Would it be all right?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
My name is Doug Bachelor. I'm one of the pastors of the Granite Bay Church. And I'm also the pastor of the Sacramento Central Seventh-day Adventist Church. I've been there for nineteen years this year. We're right across from Sac State. We're the church that initiated about eight years ago planting the church in Granite Bay because so many of our families were commuting in, they said, we want our own church home. Both Amazing Facts and the Granite Bay Church are entities of the Northern California Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. We're all, my P-Tech comes from Amazing Facts, but I'm a Seventh-day Adventist pastor. Adventist Health is a Seventh-day Adventist ministry. It's a corporation, but they have about three hundred families now, and the families need a church. And so there are several ministries in the area. You have Marinatha, for instance, International builds churches around the world, they're based in Rockland. And they have families. This is a church home for a lot of families. And admittedly, this property is right on the border of Granite Bay, Rockland, and Roseville. We will have some families that will probably be driving in, but we have a lot of families that are right now meeting in the Granite Bay area. I don't know if I'm answering your question about the relationship.
Who's, I mean, we have a proposal before us. Who owns that proposal?
Amazing Facts.
And that's a corporation?
It's a five oh one C three Christian ministry.
Okay.
And we have a church. We're under the Seventh-day Adventist Church of Northern California.
And so?
Both ministries, the church, the Granite Bay Church, the Amazing Facts Ministry are really one in that, like I said, I'm, my P-Tech comes from Amazing Facts, I'm an employee of the Seventh-day Adventist Church in Northern California. We're paid to pastor the churches. Seventh-day Adventists do a lot of outreach, and so Amazing Facts is the name of the outreach ministries.
Okay, so, so is this going to be a regional church that's being built, or?
It's a community. First and foremost, this is a church that is serving the community, and we've been there four years, so.
And the community is a regional community, or is it several different churches there?
No, this is, this is principally Granite Bay. We Seventh-day Adventists have a church in Rockland and Citrus Heights and in Roseville. This is a Granite Bay Seventh-day Adventist Church.
And that's the primary purpose of the facility that we're dealing with?
Place of worship, part of our worship component is also outreach in all of our churches. And I think that may be where the confusion's coming, and Amazing Facts is one of the titles for our ministry outreach, but we'll be gathering, and it's a church service, a church program.
Okay, and so then as you transition to phase two?
Well, phase two is to accommodate, we're, like many churches, we're starting out in a multipurpose building. And then with optimism for growth, we've made a provision for a dedicated worship center that we hope to move into as we grow.
Okay, and then as you do that, then phase one, what will become of that?
It would continue to serve for, you know, community events, dinners, and extra meeting space. We may not use the worship service every week or during the week. And if it's with permission, I'll try and answer since I'm up here unless I was interrupting. I think John maybe had something else.
Well, I just wanted to close by saying that you've clarified my question, so I appreciate that. So turn it back to the chairman then, and yeah.
If you have something else you'd like to say, you're certainly in.
I have a question.
Adam's speak, please.
Yeah, your question generated a question to me. Mr. Duper, who got up before you, said that this was going to be the world headquarters. For what? Yeah, he did. No, he was talking about the church.
No, we're not, we won't be a world.
So it's a world headquarters for nothing then, okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to try and clarify some things. First of all, thank you very much for the energy that everybody has put into this program. And we want to also thank the neighbors. We've done our best, we want to be good neighbors, we're there now, meeting from week to week. And we have really outgrown the current facility. We're very thankful for the people at the Shepherd of the Sierras that are renting to us now, but we're very limited in what we can do because we just don't have the space. When we considered, the reason we mentioned, for instance, Adventist Health and Marinatha and Amazing Facts, and there's other Seventh-day Adventist ministries in the community, their families have chosen to live in Granite Bay because it's a beautiful place. And so we needed a house of worship there. The, I've heard some questions about the Resource Center, and we have that now. And we just wanted everyone to know that there are not a lot of trucks coming in and out. We may have four or five trucks, and we're talking about UPS, BedX trucks, the smaller ones that come and deliver packages or take away lessons that volunteers are coaling DVDs. We have a large prison ministry where we send literature to prisoners, and we have volunteers that come in and help with that. We might have one large truck a week that would come and deliver pallets once our mailings have been depleted. So it's not a lot of truck traffic, and I wanted to set people in the community at ease about that. When I saw the discussion about the TV antenna, no one really raised this, but I just wanted to clarify, this is already on the air, it is a low-power TV station, we're not doing a big TV network. It's two thousand watts, which is a little more than a hair dryer. And we're on the air right now, and I'm sorry that no one has been watching. But so it sounded, as it was presented, like this is a big network operation. It's not, it's, it's a low-power television channel. And yeah, I also wanted to say that as much as I love and respect our friends at the Bayside Church, this really, it should not be compared. We've four years now been meeting in Granite Bay. We were meeting originally in the school gym across the street from where we're going to be building at the Scarborough, was it Scarborough Elementary School? Sierra Elementary School on Scarborough. And I don't think there were any complaints from the community, and though we were meeting in the gym there. So we're, we're good neighbors, we don't, you know, we're not loud, we want to be good neighbors, and we're very respectful. Originally, we were going to put some of our program on the lower half of the property. When the neighbors expressed a concern about that, we concentrated our program into those buildings on the top. And that's one reason that the scale is there, is for us to do what we do. We really had to consolidate it to be sensitive, to get away from the road, get away from the sides for the neighbors, away from down below. And we've, I think, done as well as we can in the last seven years to hear those concerns and respect them. And as far as traffic is concerned, our peak traffic would be our worship service Saturday morning, and that's what we're doing now, anyone in the community can see it. It's minimal use in the Granite Bay community right now, so the impact would probably be for daytime hours, the lowest time of the week. We do have some people that come, we don't have a hundred employees, but as we filled out the application, we said, biggest case scenario, what would happen? So we made provisions for those things. I just don't want the neighbors to be scared by those numbers. Those numbers were like the maximum numbers that we submitted, just so we wouldn't be restricted. But we don't have that now, and don't anticipate that in the near future. And what shall I more say? I just wanted to reassure everybody, we again are grateful, we've been at this for years now, great expense to the local church, and seeking to be a community of faith in Granite Bay. And we very much would appreciate your favorably considering this application. Thank you.
Before you sit down. I think you've got some questions.
One quick question. One of the speakers referred to the commercial kitchen you were putting in as making it a commercial project and so forth. But can you describe what the expanse of the kitchen's going to be and how it's going to be used?
What we're doing now is probably the best example. We just remodeled the kitchen in the Sacramento Central Seventh-day Adventist Church. It's because we have fellowship meals sometimes after church where we heat up food. We're not going to be commercially selling food. And so I don't know if it's even qualifies as a commercial kitchen. I guess we'd have some large, yeah, by code, we would have to have some of the, I guess, facilities that accommodate a lot of people. But it's just to really feed the families that come for an afternoon meal or an evening banquet.
Thank you.
One quick question for you, you can maybe fill in something here. And first of all, let me preface it by saying that your church has a reputation for doing good deeds and being a very positive influence on the community. Nobody's questioning that at all. But as the Planning Commissioner, we have the duty to balance the interests of the community at large, traffic interests, and so forth. And we went through this a number of years ago with Bayside, and you mentioned that just a minute ago. And as Mrs. Harris pointed out, you know, that's had quite an impact on the traffic down there at that area. And when the Bayside proposal came to us ten, twelve years ago, however long ago it was, they wanted two hundred and something thousand square feet as well, and the community came up in arms, or part of them did. And they eventually ended up with a compromise of ninety-four, ninety-five thousand, slightly less than a hundred thousand square feet. And you say, well, you don't have the same design goals, or you won't have the same attendance and so forth as Bayside does. Well, that may be true today, if you're really good at this, maybe you'll, you'll improve. But there's a correlation between the traffic impacts and attendance and the square footage. How would granting you approval for over two hundred thousand square foot of floor space not be precedent-setting, and would, how would we then explain that to Bayside when they came up and wanted a modification? Can't you do this with less than, than that?
Good question. I think understanding the program in a Seventh-day Adventist Church on Sabbath morning may help a little bit. We allocate a considerable amount of that two hundred thousand square feet is going to what we call Sabbath school classrooms that are really restricted space that the teachers design for the kids. And so the large assembly program is sort of at the core why we're surrounded with these Sabbath school rooms for kids ranging from infant up through youth. And so just the way that we allocate and the intensity of use for the space is very different in our, in our churches. We have a lot more room, dedicated room, I should say, to the children.
Well, Bayside was basically arguing the same thing, that they had Sunday school classrooms, and they had gymnasiums, and they had a whole sundry list of things that they wanted. And, you know, I'm really going to have a hard time explaining to Bayside why you have two hundred thousand and they don't. Can you put yourself in my shoes and help me differentiate that?
Well, some of our space is also dedicated to a studio where we duplicate the programs that are recorded, the worship programs, and those things also are used at the Resource Center. And so that's taking some of the space. And Dave has, he's got a layout of what the program or the allocation, if I can have him maybe answer that.
Somehow I knew we were going there, and I'm going to try to flip back through these very quickly, if the computer will cooperate. Is there a better place to point this thing, or is it just going to be that slow?
House looks bigger than this yours.
Technology is a wonderful thing, but we still have to be patient. While I'm scrolling back to this, and obviously the scale and the size is a sort of predominant question and issue that's been raised today, and not surprisingly, I'm prepared to address that, but unfortunately.
And modesty, Dave, don't forget the modest.
As Pastor Doug indicated, Sabbath classrooms are a key part of this. And what I'm trying to get to, and maybe I'll just read you the numbers, I wanted to have it up here graphically, but this is too painstaking. Of the hundred and six thousand eight hundred square feet for phase one, Sabbath classrooms represent about twenty-nine thousand square feet of that. Okay, and the production and offices represent another thirty-five thousand. So the multi-use area, which Commissioner Johnson, to respond to your earlier question, what will happen if this membership can grow to support a larger full-time facility? What they will be able to do is leave the multi-use setup for multi-use as opposed to every Friday or every Thursday night coming in and getting it set up for Saturday, and then breaking it down and preparing it for other events that might take place during the week. So just like St. Joseph Morello went through that, and their billing, initial billing is their multi-use facility, so is Amazing Facts on that. So about sixty percent of that phase one building is dedicated to uses that are somewhat unique to their religious practices, the Sabbath classrooms and the production offices and the Amazing Facts offices.
How does the Sabbath classroom vary from the classroom use in other churches?
I might have to have them answer that. My understanding is that what you have are prior to or immediately after services on Saturday. Those twenty-nine thousand square feet accommodate classrooms for every age level from infant through adult, and they meet before and they meet after. So those are primarily used before and after those Saturday services. Now, one speaker mentioned, I think he referred to it as a cemetery. In fact, there are two evangelism missionary training sessions twice a year, four months at a time. They may use some of these classrooms during the week. Those numbers were analyzed as part of the traffic impacts. How Bayside works with theirs and what percentage of their square footage might include that, I'm not sure, but I think the Adventist faith is a little different in terms of their use of that space. Not very efficient when you think about the, the percentage of time that amount of square footage is going to be utilized, but that's how their programming works. Phase two, Sabbath classrooms and production studios represent thirty-nine thousand, about forty percent of that space as well. So if you were to compare apples to apples, and we've heard this from the beginning, well, gosh, Bayside was this big, and they reduced their square footage based on concerns. I really believe that the programming is very different here from a standpoint of what a lot of that space is attributed to. lot of that space is attributed to. I mean, if you were to set aside the Sabbath classrooms and the production office and Amazing Facts offices, you would have about 115,000 square feet total, including the resource center.
What about the gymnasium?
The gymnasium is a use within that multipurpose building. So, there are a variety of uses. And again, we went to a great deal of effort because we knew, aside from visual impacts, traffic impacts were going to be a very serious concern. So, with the group, the applicants, and with the traffic engineer, we went through and said, all right, what are the various activities? What days of the week? What hours are those likely to take place? Another difference is Bayside has today, I believe, two Saturday afternoon sessions and three on Sunday. Their seating capacity is about the same, 2,000, as I recall. That's 10,000 people over weekend. Our conditions in the proposal here are two sessions on Saturday at ultimate maximum, 2,000 each. It's 40% of what Bayside is doing today. There are other aspects of their practice which are different, and I think it's a matter of conditioning. Your concern is what's to prevent this applicant from increasing those numbers. So, two things, the use of the square footage, when you compare apples to apples, and the number of sermons they're going to have on Saturdays versus overall weekend. So, I hope that answers that question. If not...
Let's have a big chat.
Okay?
Let me see if I can get a...
I'll tell you why.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm getting confused because to me, a classroom is a classroom. Whether you use it for Sunday school, you use it for the before service, the after-service meetings of the various grade levels. I'm just looking at the application to square footage. And I'm also thinking ahead of how is the planning staff and how are we as commissioners going to explain to Bayside why they don't get in excess of 100,000, but Seventh-day, the Amazing Facts Ministry up on the hill does? And you know, you're in this business, you've been around for a long time, the next church will come in and want the same thing. And all of a sudden, now we have this grade creep. And you talk about conditions. And yeah, we can condition it that way today, but there's nothing to prevent the church from coming in tomorrow and wanting to modify that condition and make it into 21 services over the Christmas holiday.
And I understand that, but I also think that we all know that from the square footage is a use, and from that use, then traffic numbers are calculated. And I would venture to guess that were we proposing or were this applicant to come back and suggest an intensification of uses? Or if Bayside were, your traffic impacts would not be mitigable. And that's the thing that makes this different in analyzing these uses, we're able to mitigate these impacts.
Well, not really, because that's one of the unavoidable impacts is the traffic.
I'm glad you brought that up because the reason that those remain significant and unavoidable, I don't, staff sort of explained it, but the bottom line is that those have to be deemed significant and unavoidable because they're within the jurisdiction of Rockland, and Plaister County has no control over what Rockland will do with the mitigation fees that are paid. If we could in sequoia make a leap of faith and assume that those traffic fees were in fact guaranteed to be applied as anticipated, then those would not be significant and unavoidable. Is that a correct assumption? Clarification?
Correct.
Okay. And it's a bit misleading, and going through the EIR, it's kind of like, wait a minute, why do we have all these significant unavoidable impacts? But when you look at the 13 significant and unavoidable, it really comes down to the visual impact and so the air quality and the cumulative are the keys. So, the traffic, the traffic does get mitigated to less insignificant, but we can't characterize it that way because of the different jurisdiction. Does that help?
Helped. Getting back on this business with the 200,000 versus 100,000 square feet, we haven't talked about parking spaces. Now, does Bayside only have 350 versus 670? Or I would think with the lesser square feet, they would also have less parking, and in effect, during any one time or any one service, they would have less traffic impacts, if that's true. I don't know how many spaces they have out there, but that's just a question that kind of a corollary of the size, because I am confused and concerned about the size, especially if previous commissions and previous board of supervisors cut Bayside down to half because of these same concerns.
Well, Bayside is in an, obviously, a different location, but it comes down to the programming and the traffic impacts. And so, we can't directly translate square footage to trips.
No, but you still kind of look at it and see what that implies, so...
Well, we did more than that in terms of what it implies. We looked at each of the anticipated uses that are described in the conditions of approval and in the project description, and ran the traffic analysis based on those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see, I'm a little bit confused here. As we progress through our decision-making process here, ultimately today, I believe we're only approving Phase 1?
We are requesting approval of both Phase 1 and 2, and the question was asked earlier of one of the members of the church, what's the timing of Phase 2? It's market-driven like anything else. At such time as the membership has grown to where they need to be able to have a permanent worship facility, that's when it would be feasible. That could be five years, it could be 15 years.
Okay. So, when Phase 2 comes up, you won't need to come back to the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions while I'm up here? If there aren't any other speakers...
There are.
Okay. Let me sit down and let somebody else talk.
And I'll keep it quick. Rich Redoysus, 4831 Echo Ridge Road, Rockland, north of the proposed project. I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone's already said. My two biggest concerns, one was traffic as typical. The applicant has kind of eased my mind a little bit about, I want to make sure traffic was not basically to get out of the service instead of waiting four or five signals. They could go straight into my neighborhood and cut through like a lot of the Sierra Elementary parents do, instead of going in Scarborough. I didn't want, you know, 10, 12 cars every two minutes coming through my neighborhood on Saturday morning, you know, trying to get out. If the lane configuration stays as proposed, it should work because it's a through-left combination, so everyone's going to make the left if they can instead of going straight, hopefully. Because obviously, 2,000 people leaving on a Saturday morning is going to create a lot of congestion up there, as does at Bayside. My other concern is obviously, none of my neighbors that I know of are opposed to the church, to the house. It's the size of it. It's the intensity of it. The comment was made regarding transition. To me, Bayside is a transition, and I know everyone agrees with that. You have a shopping center, you have gas stations, you have retail, you have office, and then you have Bayside, and then you have residential to transition between those uses. This up at the top of the hill, it's an intense use, completely surrounded by residential and a small quarter of the size office complex. There's no transition up there. You're not transitioning from trees to residential. There's no high-end uses coming into that. As you can see, the one comment was made regarding the, you know, the large-scale houses. We understand that there were five-acre parcels, you could build, you know, a very large house out there. The concern was parking. There's not 900 stalls along those houses with lit parking all night. You have a safety concern, you have to light your parking. So, as you drive up Sierra College or you're in the neighborhood and you look up, you're going to see nights, you know, you're not going to see much of a night sky anymore. With one house, you have a small little garage, maybe a little parking, and that's it. So, it's not that we're against the church, we're against the size of the church and its location. If it was more in a commercial area where it'd be more representative for what's used, for what they're proposing, that's fine. If it was a smaller church, no big deal at all. It's just the size of it, the intense use of it in a residential neighborhood. That's my, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one more point, clarification point on the significant unavoidable traffic impacts. Stephanie Holloway with Public Works again. I wanted to clarify that, you know, with this project, it's confusing because we're dealing with impacts, traffic impacts that happen outside of the county's jurisdiction. And I wanted to just point out, if this were a different scenario, if this project was proposed, say, you know, in the heart of Granite Bay on Douglas Boulevard, and we were looking at, you know, intersections and roadway segments that were under the jurisdiction of the county, that would be a different situation. This project, because of the outside jurisdictions and the impacts that occur there, we have significant unavoidable impacts for the reasons that Dave Cook pointed out. Without that, if you take that away, if you basically say those jurisdictions are within the county, there would not be any significant unavoidable impacts. There would not be any impacts that would not be able to be mitigated. So, say it a better way, if the intersections that we're talking about were county, you know, under county's control, this project as proposed and as analyzed would be able to mitigate those impacts and that no significant unavoidable impacts would occur. So, I just wanted to make that clarification, that the reason there are significant unavoidable impacts is because of the county's lack of, you know, control over the way the city of Rockland uses the fair share mitigation funds.
So, you're trying to tell me, or you are telling me and telling us, that you don't have any kind of cooperative agreements with the cities, and that's something that develops, let's say, in the city of Roseville where I live? I don't care what happens in county property, if it's going to be impacting some county roads and county stuff, that there's no working agreements, there's no cooperative collaborative agreements that kind of prevent this kind of stuff from happening?
No, I'm not saying that at all. In fact, there are cooperative agreements through SPARDA. That is a cross-jurisdictional effort that the county has taken with a number of different jurisdictions to identify these issues of outside impacts. The city of Roseville and Plaister County has a cross-jurisdictional, you know, project with the city-county fees. So, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that we can't, we can't have a, you know, it's very difficult for us to have a cross-jurisdictional impact assessment and an MOU for every location that you might see a car show up from a project that's being proposed. So, although we've taken a lot of efforts to come up with, you know, projects and impacts, locations that we feel, you know, are necessary to identify those, we can't do that for every facility, for every location. And in those situations, you know, this issue of the fair share mitigation has been policy for the county.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other speakers, may I respond to some of the statements, or would you prefer to have questions from the commission and then have me come back up?
Commissioners have questions?
I'm not afraid to interrupt here and ask people.
I know that. Thank you. In terms of some of the comments and some of the concerns raised, we talked about its scale a little bit, and I'll get back to that. The first speaker, Dr. Taggart, who's purchased a lot in Cabot Ranch Estates, I appreciate his concerns. I understand that. Is this the lot here, Steve?
My glasses on.
Okay, that's, this is the, this is the stuff. So, it's this lot further in. We have had two meetings with the Cabot Ranch Estates Homeowners Association. I assume that Dr. Taggart may have received notices, but at any rate, like some of the other meetings and just the way the process sometimes work, I met with two officers of the board on one meeting, and I had one neighbor who happens to live in the home right here adjacent to the 17-acre portion that will be developed. And there were concerns raised there about scale, there were concerns raised about traffic, and we've continued on and off again dialogue with that property owner who, you know, is going to be, you know, more affected by this than somebody further away, not that somebody further away is not affected. The concerns were scale, and we talked about the setbacks here, and that's one of the biggest things that we've done. You look at square footage, and I talked about the difference in programming, and that's really what it comes down to from a standpoint of how does that square footage affect somebody? It's visual and it's traffic. But what we did was, we agreed that we would plant larger, more mature redwoods along here to screen this common property. We also agreed that we would put in and extend the fence that surrounds sort of the top of the slope wall back here behind the site, make sure that it goes all the way over, because this property is only fenced about two-thirds of the way down. And there was concern that what's to prevent folks that are out here, you know, either before or after services, from wandering down along that common property line in the backyard? So, we've, where we've had that opportunity, we've tried to deal with those concerns and taken care of them. We'd not heard until today any concerns from anyone else in here, and so, it's a bit of a surprise, but it's not uncommon. Yeah, this is larger than Bayside, but we're not a year-round seminary. It's not seven days a week. This is primarily a Monday through Thursday operation, Saturday services. Will there be activities on the other seven, on the other days? Yes, but primarily, the peak trips are analyzed because they take place on Saturdays. You've got the maximum potential 97 employees, come at A and P and peak times. Those are analyzed as well, but this is not a seven-day-a-week commercial operation. Mr. Sands mentioned, and I think some others have said, hey, a 300-person church would be great. Well, that would be fine, except economy of scale doesn't work with 300, 300 people. And this is something where we've attempted to mitigate and minimize the impact of scale by all the things that we walked you through with not just the color of the buildings and the placement of the buildings, but also the design, the setbacks. 300-person church doesn't work for this, and this may only become a 1,300-person church at peak. It might not be able to grow to the ultimate Phase 2, but that's the goal. That's one of the key objectives.
But Dave, you were around for all the Bayside hoopla.
I was around.
Yeah. And knowing what we went through there and knowing the economies of scale and so forth, why didn't you attempt to locate the church somewhere else where it might be more suitable? For example, that lot next door to the Seventh-day Adventist Health property, or somewhere down on Douglas?
Well, we did look at other sites. And let me clarify, on the Adventist Health facility, and there was a little confusion, Frank mentioned we'd be back for approval. I think we know that's in the jurisdiction of the city of Roseville. It's not, it's not going to be under your purview. That's a relatively small lot, and although a church would be in allowed use in that zone district, I'm fairly certain, I don't even know that that would be large enough for a 300-person church. It's very small. There are not very many sites in Doug, excuse me, in Granite Bay, and particularly along Douglas, that would facilitate this. This is really on a, if this were on a smaller road, other than Sierra College, I don't believe it would work. But this is the best site. It's on the edge of the Granite Bay community, and the site allows the flexibility of some creative site planning to minimize the impact of the scale of these buildings. So, I really see it as there's a similarity, but we can't just focus on the square footage of what Bayside proposed or what's proposed here. We have to look at what are the traffic numbers that result from the uses proposed, given the difference in the programming that this applicant has vis a vis of Bayside.
Do you also have to consider the proposed uses or how it might grow in the future? When Bayside was first proposed, they were going to have two services on Sunday and, you know, three on Christmas, and now look at them. And, you know, with people like you representing there heading up this church, I expect it to grow beyond its wildest imagination. How do we explain this in the future to the other folks who want a large facility like that, and they're talking in terms of traffic for two services when, you know, we look at the potential, there may be 10 a day? Should we look at that as a factor?
Certainly should, but I believe that in the evaluation from a standpoint of sequoia, but also in the way the project's conditioned, the description limits this to two services on Saturday. And it would be the obligation of the applicant, if they ever got to the point where they wanted to have more, they would have to come back, then they would have to reevaluate traffic impacts. They would have to look at the new background status, and they would have to demonstrate that that increase doesn't create impacts that they can no longer mitigate. Whereas now, given the programming, not the square footage, given the programming, they're able to mitigate the impacts on traffic. The only other couple of points here, Mr. Earl mentioned that this is an inappropriate business, this should not be in allowed use. I want to clarify, and I presume the commission is aware of this, that promotion of religion is in fact in allowed use within the zoning code, and that resource center function is for promotion of the religion. for promotion of the religion. We looked at a number of different ways to try to eliminate that building, and we looked at locating it in the corner of either Phase One or Phase Two. And at the end of the day, from a standpoint of what traffic it does have impacting neighbors, the feeling was this is going to be the best location, keep it closer to Sierra College as opposed to put it in the corner of Phase One here where that truck traffic would then be coming down adjacent to these neighboring residential properties. But those uses are part of their missionary efforts, not unlike many other churches, but this is just a more efficient way for them to accommodate the operation. It is in fact in allowed use and is, it is appropriate. I think the final point that I'd like to make, and I appreciate Loomis and Sierra View State's being here, although the county is not proposing the striping condition, as I said earlier, it became fairly clear to us that that will have some regional benefit, and that we believe that it would be appropriate to have that added as a condition, and staff has that language. If we get to that point, we would propose that that in fact be added, so the applicant is obligated to go ahead and implement that striping program. So, the house of worship, as we know, that is in allowed use in this zoning district. It's, the use and the project as proposed is consistent with the general plan, it is consistent with the Granite Bay community plan as of dated. It's adjacent urban development at the edge of the Granite Bay community plan area, it's not in the heart per se of Granite Bay, it's in a place where those traffic impacts are going to have far less effect on neighboring properties because of its ability to use a major north-south arterial connecting highways 80 and 50. Talked about development, it's been occurring on that ridgeline for 20-plus years, and so the character of that ridgeline has changed in this billing, and the billings are proposed so that they fit in that scale. And in fact, we think that maybe these buildings will have potentially less visual impact than large estate homes. So, we feel that this project as proposed will be compatible with the surrounding area, and with that, would request the commission's consideration of the application and request, and certify the EIR and the variance, and approve the project.
Okay, one point, I maybe have another question. Now, I saw, you know, I noticed your presentation on the balloons and the buildings and the mockups, and that seemed to indicate that there really was not an adverse visual impact. But the EIR says there is. Could you clarify for me what the unmitigated visual impact is that the EIR is talking about?
My preference would be to ask the EIR consultant or staff or county council, because I agree with you. We went through an exercise, but I think, this is my professional opinion, that's erring on the side of caution and being conservative, as opposed to saying we've adequately addressed it and there will be no visual impacts. But I think that's a more technical question that I'm prepared to answer, and I may be a little biased on that, so.
Okay.
Staff or the EIR preparers here?
Well, I do have one more question before you sit down, and then we'll let staff answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is the merton formation that this church is being built on?
Correct.
Have you ever tried to dig in that before?
I have, luckily, we know people with equipment that can tear through it.
Okay.
Yes.
And so when you're going to plant larger redwood trees for view?
It will require larger holes and a bit more time and effort. Now, at some point with the grading proposed on this site, there will be places where we will actually break through part of that merton cap, but that is, that's an expense that they realize, and it comes with not only grading cost, but that's where rural pools have a tendency to live, and as we all know, mitigation for impacting those rural pools is not inexpensive.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Now we can go back to that question.
I was going to say, good morning, but it's actually good afternoon now. Good afternoon, commission, Patrick Angel, I'm the project manager for the EIR. In regards to the determination on visual resource impacts, as everyone's aware, you know, aesthetics is kind of an eye and the hole in regards to what's pleasing and what's displeasing. We were conservative in our analysis, Dave is correct in regards to that statement, and what we looked at was, was the feature going to be visible from the ridgeline, and in turn, what it would look like from Sierra College Boulevard in relation to what's currently out there? So conservatively, we looked at it and said, well, you can't completely avoid seeing this feature from some public roads from below, as Dave has identified, and it will be a substantial change from views on Sierra College Boulevard, and just aired on the point of caution, saying, well, given the project design and type, you just can't avoid that issue. So, the EIR conservatively came to that conclusion based on those circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
You prepared the EIR?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm looking here, and there was three alternatives, the no-project development under existing zoning, and alternative three, which reduce scale of worship alternative. Now, wouldn't that reduce traffic and visual? It wouldn't give them the full 200,000 square feet, but it would reduce those?
Yes, that alternative was basically looking at if you only went forward and you did Phase One, you didn't go on and do Phase Two. So, yes, you would see obviously a reduction in traffic. Visually, you'd still see these features, but you wouldn't have the second building, so there would be some visual effect, but you wouldn't have both buildings.
And you would also reduce the impact on the air quality, so all three of the unavoidable's would be reduced?
Yes, they would be.
That is correct statement. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Did anybody who wanted to speak get a chance? Okay, if so, then I guess we'll formally close the public comment portion. And for discussion with commissioners? Dave, do you have anything else you wanted to add? Discussion, motion?
Well, it seems like the discussion is, I mean, the point that is really kind of binding right now is the 100,000 square feet versus 200,000 square feet, and what, how that might affect precedents. So at least, it seems to me that's the issue that's before the table, I don't know if I have an answer for that yet.
I guess maybe, you know, my thought process on that, when you, Rich, when you brought up, well, they had the reduced footage, and, you know, so you eliminate part of it, but in any, any project when you're building, I mean, you know, part of, part of that deal, does it meet the project goals of that project? And so maybe the one building ultimately for the church does not meet their standards. I mean, if you said, okay, instead of 108,000 square foot, it was 90,000 square feet, but you still need the second building, and that's what they're, ultimately their project is looking at.
You know, I'm not saying that, but it is. They disagree with what they want, they want the 200,000 square feet. I'm just saying that under one of the alternatives, that it would, all three of the unavoidable things would be reduced.
But they'd still be unavoidable.
And they would still be unavoidable, it still would be reduced. And getting back, and I was not here for the Bayside, I was just on the peripheral, I just heard about it. Evidently, they wanted the 200,000 for various reasons, and probably environmentally and traffic and et cetera. It was reduced to 95, and I think that's a big concern. We have, we have something that we, the commission, I guess Board of Supervisors approved contentiously before, that was closer down to where there was development, service stations, whatever, commercial and stuff, and now we've got something up on top of a ridge, that really, there isn't that much around it.
I don't know that.
And I'm just saying, I'm just saying that's a concern for the commission, getting to what Richard was saying about the precedent setting.
Does square footage equate to intensity of use? Because that's really.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
The buildings could be half the size, and if they're still bringing, you know, if they're still having the same number of functions, the impact's still there.
Well, how do you control intensive use in the future if it's not a condition?
It is a condition, though.
You know, one, maybe, I look at it a little different, even when you talk about Bayside. The thing is, you can restrict them down to 50,000 square feet, but if there's enough people that all of a sudden you have to have 15 services a day, should have you just made it a bigger facility and put it in the location? No, I mean, I honestly look at it that way. You're saying, you know, you're trying to restrict it, but if, if they grow into 10 services a day, does that mean that you have to build three more churches that size in there to cover it? You know, it's easy to say, you know, shoot, we should restrict it down to 300 families, but if 2,000 families want to go to the service, I mean, I, I don't know, it's.
Wouldn't that effectively eliminate the purpose of planning, because every building would be maxed out?
Well, I, I guess, I look at it, if they're the ones that are, they know their church group, what they can grow to, what are you going to do, put a church every quarter mile on Sierra College?
Let me back up for just a moment if I could. Larry, did you?
I was just going to offer the suggestion that maybe the real problem is, we're trying to plan too far in advance, that maybe we should look at approving Phase One with the understanding that Phase Two would come back in at a later time and be brought up to, maybe not have to do a full new EIR, but just a limited one that would speak to any changes that had taken place since the original one was done. Because that's a big expense, and I hate to see anyone have to go through that more than once. But it may be, I would think that maybe a justification for them to move forward under Phase One, and then come back in with Phase Two, and if there's some unmitigated stuff that comes up, they can take care of it at that time, and then maybe the community will have been adjusted and feels comfortable with what's going on there and be thrilled with it, you know?
That may be a good idea. I was going to take you back for a moment, and Ken, I don't know if you were on when, I think it was about year 2000 or something like that, when Elliot Holmes first came in and wanted to subdivide that area that we're now looking next door, and they were going to subdivide it down into quarter acre lots or something like that, and the community came unglued. And the community plan had been premised on the fact that everything east of Sierra College Boulevard would be larger lots, more rural, and horsey property and all of these things that we heard. Larry, I know you were on it at that time. And we stood firm as a planning commission and said, no, that was the community plan, they wanted the larger lots to transition on out towards the east, and so Elliot Holmes then put in the 10-acre lots that, or 5-acre, whatever they are, that we see there now, and it looks really nice. And as you climb up the hill from Bayside, it's residential, 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 and then all of a sudden this proposal, and then it goes residential, residential. I think it's somewhat inconsistent at the level that they're proposing it now. I would have a very difficult time finding that it's consistent at 200,000 feet, and I would be somewhat difficult or hard-pressed to explain to somebody from Bayside of why one church gets 200,000 and the other doesn't. Larry, that's why I kind of like your approach, do it in phase and let them justify the second half. And also, early on, I asked about the conditions with respect to the rest of the property. We've got 17 acres that are proposed to be used for this church out of 74, 72, something like that. And EJ points out that as a practical matter, it may be difficult to build on the rest, but we've all seen them do things that we didn't anticipate, parsonages, dorms for students, and the eight months out of the 12 that they use for their seminary may grow to 12. There's any number of things that can happen down there, and all of a sudden, the use is much more intensive than we anticipated. How do we, how do we prevent that? How do you explain this to Bayside? I know Dave's sitting over there probably saying, no Jerry, no Jerry, it's traffic, you idiot. I said traffic, not square foot, you know, and, yeah, but I'm also looking at.
At where it's at.
Yeah, I'm looking at the location.
We're spending a lot of time anticipating a question from somebody who hasn't asked it yet, for one. I mean, Bayside hasn't posed this question, nor have they applied for any additional footage, at this point in time.
I don't think we're using Bayside as a club, we're just saying, there's some things here that are a little inconsistent, is all I'm saying.
And anywhere you have a church in a residential neighborhood, which is where they're permitted, you have residential, residential, residential church and residential, this happens.
200,000 square feet of church.
The size is an issue, I understand, but I mean, as far as consistency of use within an, within an area, this happens everywhere, when you put churches in residential zones.
Most of the people that spoke, even against, out here today, weren't against the church. In fact, most of them said, we're not against the church, they were against the size. So I think Larry's phasing is a beautiful idea if we're going to proceed on it.
The problem I see with that, from the applicant's point of view, is you're asking them to make a substantial financial commitment into a project that they have a vision for of being.
We're not here just for the applicant.
I understand that.
Advocacy, we're here to protect the community.
I understand exactly why we're here, thank you very much, but there's two sides to both of it.
Doesn't sound like it, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Two sides to both of it, and there needs to be, when you're asking them to live up to all the conditions that go with Phase One, they're agreeing to do that in anticipation of Phase Two. Chopping it down kind of changes the whole board then.
Why can't we look at what they're proposing as the general plan for the area, I mean, for this parcel, with the idea that they can come in and do it in two phases? And so they've got a, they've got a, an improved project schematically for the whole thing, and they've got, in fact, and then they could have, in fact, an approval for the first phase now, with the understanding that if things remain somewhat consistent, they can come back in at a later time and get the second approval?
Under your scenario, what would be required when they came back in? Would there be a supplemental EIR, would there be just an application or what?
Well, there'd probably be an environmental questionnaire at the very least, I mean, you'd have to do that no matter what, and that would pick out if there were major issues that had to be addressed, they would, and that'd be unfortunate, but at least if there weren't any and everything was okay, then you could just go ahead and have a hearing and say, we've determined that it's appropriate to go ahead with Phase Two and give them a building permit.
I'd like to hear from Dave. Yeah, I'd like to hear from the applicant, because I'm hearing two, I'm hearing two things, I mean, because I see that they're bringing two phases before us, and then I'm hearing what you're saying, Jerry and Rich, but what I'm sort of hearing is, is Phase Two ain't going to happen, you know, I mean, if it comes.
Who knows?
I mean, we approve one, but then all of a sudden it opens.
I didn't say that, I might not. But they, but they said themselves Phase Two may never happen, it could turn out that that's, that's their discretion.
I understand.
Not, not something that, you know, we would impose on them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I don't recall saying it may never happen, I might have said that, but in any situation like this, it is one of the objectives of this application and of this applicant, to be able to grow this such that they have the benefit of really a permanent worship facility on Saturdays as opposed to the setup and breakdown that I mentioned. I don't care what it is you're building, you have to finance it, and churches are financed by donations, and donations are financed by vision and hope and opportunity, and part of this whole thing is knowing that at some point, they will have that permanent facility, they will have the entire project. St. Joseph Morello, different, but approved both phases, and again, I understand, we're talking about a difference in numbers, and I appreciate the clarification that Chairman Moss made, which, again, it's the impacts from the square footage, it's not the square footage itself, it's the visual effect of the buildings, not the size, it's only one What, what we would offer to do, which would help keep that vision and help keep that overall goal intact, would be to make a reduction in the overall square footage. And I think we can do that, but it would not be to the extent that perhaps you're attempting to arrive at by virtue of lopping off Phase Two. It would be in the 10% range, which is non-insignificant, I mean, that's 20,000 square feet. But I think the applicant and their representative, myself, we hear the concerns, we understand, I don't agree that it's necessarily precedent-setting, because I think each project has to be evaluated on. to be evaluated on its own merits and its own impacts. But again, in an effort to, you know, be aware of the concerns and to try to help this body come to a conclusion, I think there are ways that they can maintain their programming and go through and reduce the square footage. But that would, that would be the, the extent of it.
That would be your preferred alternative, right?
That would be the preferred alternative, not analyzing the EIR, that's correct. Thank you.
No, it's, it's covered because it's less than, it's got less potential than the other, that's okay. I have to go, and I'm sorry that it has taken this long, but I just have another very important meeting I have to go to, so I would encourage us to, if we can, for whoever to make a motion and, and move this forward in some form or another.
Make it before you go.
No, I think I'll, I'll...
You're going to ask me to leave?
...represent that area to make the motion.
I don't get to make one.
It's right, you're the neighbor. Well, I can't make it, I may have a conflict, because I went, in seventh grade, I went to this Adventist school. Up in the mountains in the Sierras, so I may not be able to...
Well, I guess, I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and I, I'm hearing that they're willing to, to cut back by...
20,000 square feet.
20,000 square feet. So I move that, one, we certify the environmental impact report for the project and the minor revisions to the draft and final EIR, and adopt the findings, facts, and statements of overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. And then, two, we approve the minor use permit to allow a house of worship facility and roof-mounted broadcasting antenna.
I think County Council's trying to tell you that, want to take them separately, maybe?
I, I'm...
Oh, okay, I, I, I should know that by now.
No, no, let me just interject, because I'm not sure how the motion is coming down, but should the motion propose something that we don't have coordinated with the conditions of approval, I think it's the consensus of staff that will probably ask you to take tentative action and then continue this item so that staff can make sure that all the conditions are coordinated with, with what might be being approved. So I just wanted to raise that now.
So, so this is...
I'm not sure where this is going, but...
A tentative approval or tentative denial?
Yeah. For example, if you were only doing Phase One, or if you're doing a reduction of square footage, as I'm hearing, there, there are numerous conditions regarding traffic impact fees, there are other conditions that really need to be looked at to make sure it's consistent with what the planning commission action might be. So I just want to forewarn you as you're fashioning your, your motion.
I'll second his motion to approve the EIR.
Okay, motion in second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, no, here too. Okay.
No, so we've got to have a roll call here?
Roll call for...
Kathy, please.
Mr. Brentall?
No.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Gray, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved, okay. Two, approve the minor use permit to allow a house of worship facility and roof-mounted broadcasting antenna.
As in, as set forth in the staff report, is that what you...
Yeah, as set forth.
What about that striping language that Dave alluded to and said that the staff has, uh, Sarah has it?
I do have it, and I could read it into the record. Okay, this would be an addition to the roads and trails section, and it speaks to the restriping that is already proposed and has already been analyzed. It says, it says, "The applicant shall work with the City of Rockland and Sparta to secure approval of the restriping project for Sierra College Boulevard as generally depicted in Figure 1-4 of the final EIR. Shouldn't agreement slash approval of this improvement be obtained with the City of Rockland and Sparta prior to improvement plans in the middle, the approval of this, the approved striping and signing plan shall be included as a part of the project improvement plans. Prior to the first certificate of occupancy, the restriping project shall be completed and operational."
You mentioned signage once, striping many times. You're including the sign as part of that?
Well, there is signing usually associated with the striping, but it is a, generally a striping project.
So you're including that as part of your motion?
Yeah.
And I want to add one more minor correction to a condition of approval that, that is just almost a typo, but it's condition number 85, in order to mitigate the project's contribution to long-term emissions of pollutants, there's, there's a couple options, A and B, but down below, it's, it refers to completer either one or two above, it should be either A or B above. So, minor correction to condition number 85.
Add that to it.
Second.
Okay, got a motion.
So we've got a motion?
Okay, before...
Are you going to entertain discussion at this point?
I said second. We got a second, certainly.
Yeah, Larry did it. I'm going to vote against this, and the reason is, I just can't bring myself to vote in favor of something at 208,000 square feet, given the neighborhood, given the community plan, and given other uses that are somewhat inconsistent just down the street. I think that's going to set a bad precedent, and I simply can't justify or explain the delta between this and other projects based on the facts, the traffic, or anything. So I just wanted to make a point of that.
Sound like a roll call. You might as well.
Okay. May as well go straight to a roll call, please, Kathy?
Mr. Brentall?
No, no.
Mr. Ricucci?
No.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, no.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
3-3.
Motion failed. Now let's discuss.
Well, they have a few rights, or...
Well, we have another motion.
Let me ask County Council. Now, I'm tempted, I'm sitting here thinking, well, I would be tempted to make a motion to approve the project with an overall limit of square feet of 100,000 square feet. I don't know what would happen to that. Would that be appropriate at this time, or would that require staffing before, or would it be a tentative motion? How could we do that without leaving it hanging there?
We wouldn't need to.
I think you'd have to renotice it. We had to have to renotice?
You think?
Would we?
Okay. We think in the abundance of caution because of all the conditions, that if you wanted to make the motion, and if that passes, to take it as tentative and direct staff to review the conditions of approval to make them consistent with the motion.
Let's just say for hypothetical purposes that you were making this motion, how would you phrase it?
Or just like I said?
Okay, that we would direct staff to go back and reexamine this project with respect to 100,000 square foot cap on...
Right, I mean, the intent would be, it, we, we need to see if we have a motion that's going to pass.
Right.
So you would make your motion as a tentative motion, we'd see what the vote is. If the vote passes that tentative motion, then the next would be direction to staff to bring this back with revised conditions as necessary to coordinate with, with the, the, the motion, and then we bring it back.
Bring a project back consistent with the 100,000 square foot limitation?
Correct. Then we'd have a chance to look at all the conditions. We're just not comfortable that we could do that on the fly.
You guys are pretty good at this. Then, Mr. Chairman, I would move, as County Council suggested, that this be a tentative motion to limit the overall square footage to 100,000 square feet and direct staff to go off and study this and come back with specific recommendations at a later date.
Do we have a tentative?
Say, Jerry, does that, are, are you thinking of the Phase One square footage, or you're turning up with 100,000?
No, just 100,000.
What's the basis for that?
The basis for that is it's more consistent with what we did with Bayside. Then it would be up to the applicant to redesign his project consistent with it, to get his floor space down to 100,000 square foot.
What's the property difference between Bayside and, I mean, we know that this has 77 acres, how much property does Bayside have?
Wow, I don't know. More than one.
But nowhere near 77, I don't believe.
No. On the other hand, you know, as a practical matter, how much of this is usable? Well, apparently 17 acres.
Was, can I ask a question? Was Phase One, I don't remember the chart, was it 107,000 square feet or...
108,000?
I would think that would be, well, you, you're making a motion, so I'm not...
Talk to me.
...hasn't been seconded yet, but...
No, it hasn't, so we can, I can modify it.
Well...
Are you thinking to limit them to the same number that's in Phase One?
Phase One, because they have a design for it, and if they can live rather than some arbitrary, not arbitrary, but you know, they'd have to start even modifying Building One if, if we say 100,000, since it's at 107 right now.
Okay, well...
Did you just, to interject, Phase One includes the multi-use building, just under 108,000 square feet, and also the 11,200 square foot or so, so resource building.
So we're talking about almost 119,000 square feet?
Okay, so, okay, I'll, I'll withdraw my comment then.
Okay, I'll leave it at 100,000, let's see what happens.
Okay, I'll second. Motion in a second. Right to the roll call.
Mr. Brentall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Denio?
No.
Mr. Sevison is left, I guess.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Moss?
No.
So that fails.
Well, you know, I would modify the motion to...
Actually, you can't, you make a new one.
Oh, a new one?
Mm-hmm.
I'd make the motion that we, uh, make it equal to Phase One, which is what, 117,000, 118,000 square feet?
Eight plus 11, 220, 119, 220.
Okay, so make it 119, 220.
Can I clarify this motion? Is the motion to approve Phase One or to approve the square footage that's the equivalent?
My, my motion would be to approve Phase One.
You have a second?
Oh. Okay, when you say approve Phase One, it, it, they're requesting Phase One footage? Mm-hmm. And then just eliminate Phase Two? I, I don't know, I guess, honestly, I, I would like to hear from the applicant if, if this, because I mean, maybe, you know, it just kills the whole project, or, I don't know, I mean, it's either...
Well, there's an old adage, the third time's a charm, although I'm not sure it's exactly applicable, applicable here. We understand the concerns, and although our preference would be as submitted, obviously, and as I mentioned, you know, a 10% reduction, but given the discussion, given the concerns raised, I, I, I think my client would be willing to accept approval of the project, the Phase One portion at this point as, as submitted. And I would like some clarification from staff and/or County Council as to how we characterize dealing with Phase Two. But in concept, that would be acceptable.
Thank you, Dave.
The motion is to approve only Phase One, and basically, the use permit would be approved for Phase One. The conditions would be modified to coordinate with Phase One, and Phase Two would drop out of the use permit approvals. Bear in mind, it's part of the EIR that you, you've just certified. And I want to clarify that point, too, that should the applicant wish to come in, in the future, I mean, say, say it's approved at Phase One, it stays at Phase One, if the applicant wishes to come back at a future time for Phase, for Phase Two, what's here right now, staff would look, review that proposal in light of the EIR that's certified and make a determination at that point whether there were any changed circumstances, new additional impacts. In other words, would review that EIR to determine whether any subsequent or additional environmental analysis would need to be done. I want to make sure that's clear, that that would be a separate application request, and it would be reviewed in the context of the certified EIR, but it would be reviewed once again.
Somewhat true of anything, they could come back in and put a, the tower of peace on the back if they wanted to. I mean, all this would be a new application, going through the same process, you're just saying that the EIR had already been done for the second phase.
It's there for the second phase.
It may or may not require supplementing.
Yeah, we can't sit here and guarantee and say, no, that there won't be any environmental review again, we could never say that. And you're absolutely right, I mean, they could come in and revise whatever's approved here today, they can come in in a year and, and revise that.
Okay, well, that seems like a fair compromise, and Rich, I'll second your motion.
Straight to the roll call, please.
Wait, wait, could, wait, wait, can I just repeat the motion? I, we, what's the motion?
Approve Phase One as...
Okay.
I just wanted to make...
As requested. Yeah, approve, approve Phase One as requested.
119,220 square feet, that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And does that have the corrections to condition 85 and the striping in that motion also?
That's correct.
We need to come back.
And just as, just as a point of clar, clarification, we will need to come back on this, so this will be a tentative approval.
Right.
So we will, you'll be giving direction to staff to go back and prepare revised conditions relating to your...
And when you come back, what the commission will be looking at is not the overall project, but the conditions that are being imposed, and whether they're consistent with the direction as we understood what we gave it, if we do in fact understand that.
Roll call, please, Kathy?
Mr. Brentall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes, no, I, I, I'll give him that, and it's only just because the applicant said that they would go with it.
So yes?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Motion passes.